do the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members and city officials and to the Hawthorne community. Let us pray. God of justice, God of peace and mercy, God of our hope and our strength, God of our forgiveness. We have gathered in this meeting place tonight to thank you for the gift of life, to thank you for allowing us to be part of this family and community called Hawthorne. Thank you for sharing your grace upon each and every one of us. As we gather here, we ask you to help us to act and to speak with compassion for our fellow brothers and sisters. We ask you to help us to act with clarity, conviction, and character. We ask you to help us to maintain the spirit of unity and to give us a spirit of service. We ask these in your name, I pray, amen.
Before I say the pledge, can I see if we have any veterans or military personnel? So we salute you first. So begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Montero.
As in?
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So I'm not gonna hold back. I'm going to literally tell you what the delay was today. At the last meeting, we requested our city clerk's office to provide us whoever so wanted to have a paper copy or stick to the digital copy. The city clerk, Dana Hunter, you failed to provide that to me, ma'am.
Dana Williams Hunter, sir.
Dana Williams Hunter, you failed to provide that to me after you were specifically instructed. We can't have these 17-minute delays because you're not willing to fulfill what's been asked of you, ma'am. You have your duties that we already recited at the last meeting. All the duties are prescribed by general law and your office. Please provide us with this. You have enough time. If you have enough time to have your side projects, you should be able to provide this so that we can have a meeting that starts on time. If you're not willing to do that, I'm gonna ask our city manager, Von Norris, to instruct the city clerk's staff for her. Can you do that, sir? And just double-check that this is provided, okay? It's a complete, it's a straight defiance of what we said here. Any request from city council need to be honored from your office, ma'am. Right. And if this goes on again, it's a direct challenge to the city council. Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendations.
Through the chair, we do have a presentation.
Yes, and the reason I did that, Mr. Corey Crockerham, are you here, sir? Are you here with anybody else from your group? Okay, the only reason I asked that is because their presentation on fraud day was not placed on the agenda, so I'll just let them speak and there's a group of two, so they might need 10 minutes worth.
All right.
Is that okay with you guys? All right, sir.
All right.
You'll be the first ones. And can you bring up your group, yeah, for the presentation? Tax Fraud Day by Carpenters Union Local 323. And since there's four of you, could equal up to 20 minutes technically, but however long you need, just let us know, okay?
Three minutes should be perfect.
Okay, then that's good. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, fellow board members, mayor. My name's Corey Crockerham, a member of Carpenters Local 323 Union. I'm here with a few of my colleagues from Local 562 and Local 323 as well. We represent this South LA Basin area. We cover this jurisdiction. Today, we are here, let me back up a little bit, this is amazing to me, I was born at Hawthorne Memorial Hospital, so to be here addressing you 47 years later is, I don't know, something for me. But anyhow, so, yeah, we're here to present our awareness of tax fraud days of action, and I will read from something here. It is estimated that construction tax fraud is responsible for cheating communities out of $8.4 billion in tax revenue each year. That's billions of dollars of lost tax revenue that could be used for building and renovating schools, repairing roads, caring for veterans, sheltering homeless, and funding other essential public programs. The prevalence of construction industry tax fraud has reached crisis levels and must be stopped. This April 10 through 18, and we've extended that, Carpenters Local 323 and Local 562 and the city of Hawthorne and surrounding communities and the United Brotherhood of Carpenters are taking part in the National Tax Fraud Days of Action, week-long series of events to raise awareness about construction industry tax fraud. The Tax Fraud Days of Action grew out of a widespread outrage about construction industry tax fraud. A range of practices where employers evade their tax responsibilities in several ways. Often, they initially misclassify workers as independent contractors or pay workers in cash-only arrangements. As a result, the businesses significantly reduce their income tax and payroll tax responsibilities and defraud communities out of much-needed tax revenue that fund your fire departments, schools, libraries, health services, and road maintenances. And now, as communities are facing budget shortfalls due to lost sales tax revenues due to rising inflation, it's more important than ever to crack down on these bad actor contractors who are stealing from the residents of the city of Hawthorne and surrounding communities in LA County. We brought a couple of t-shirts. Hopefully, we can get your sizes and I can hand them over to the clerk. Large, large, extra-large.
Extra-large.
See, hands for large.
You got medium.
No mediums.
Okay, large will be fine.
Got 2X, so 1, 2X.
I'm like, you're asking women for their sizes?
I'm asking members of this board for their sizes.
1X.
And I also have some literature I'd like to leave as well. I guess I'll leave all that over there. So, hands for larges. Let me see. 1, 2.
I'm an extra-small.
I heard that.
I'll give it to my grandchildren.
Extra-large, 1. Double-X, 1.
A large.
Large, so 3 large now? Going once, going twice, anybody else? All right, thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate you.
Real, a leading question, just, so, what led you guys to be at the forefront of this issue?
So it's something that is rampant in our industry, so our contractors have to go out and compete against these bad actor contractors, so it makes it tough and as well as those tax revenue dollars go to fund projects, and those projects don't happen when those tax revenues don't come in. We all are tax-paying citizens. Everybody should pay their fair share, and we just want to bring awareness to the community so everyone knows what's going on.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Just give him a round of applause and thank him for coming. So, we'll move back to, excuse me, the regular proclamations. A Hawthorne municipal update from Mr. Guido Fernandez. So oral communications is closed temporarily while we go back to presentations.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to bring this update on the Hawthorne Airport. I'll be honest, I'm excited to be here. It's been about a year since the last presentation, so thank you once again so much for this time. As you can see here on the first slide, the Hawthorne Airport, also known as Jag North or Field, also known as HHR, Hotel Romeo, that's the FAA designation. Here's basically a map of the Hawthorne Airport showing how it's bordered by Crenshaw on the east, Prairie on the west, and 120th Street on the north. Now, who is responsible for the operations at Hawthorne Airport? Actually, three parties are responsible. The city, as the airport sponsor, is required by the FAA by grant assurances to keep the airport open for use by the public. Also, the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, they're responsible for safety of the airspace and air traffic. And finally, FBOs or fixed base operators, airport businesses that manage private aviation, aircraft, passengers, and services. Now, specifically, what is the city responsible for at the airport? Well, we maintain the runways and the taxiways, movement areas, the airfield lighting such as the runway and taxiway lights, turf areas, the green areas, the grass. We also maintain the FAA tower building, the air traffic control tower. We also maintain the perimeter fence and all the gates of the airport. And overall, the security and safety at the airport. I'd like to acknowledge that we wouldn't be able to do that without the Hawthorne PD, so we thank you, the PD, for helping us in maintaining the security of the airport. Now, the FAA, what are they responsible for? They manage airspace, and one easy way of thinking about it that I like to say is that the minute that the wheels leave that runway, we're no longer responsible. It's the FAA has authority for the airspace and air traffic. They ensure air safety, efficient flow of aircraft traffic, they establish the flight patterns around the airport, they implement flight procedures, and they also determine the minimum flight altitudes of aircraft around the airport. They implement flight procedures, and they also determine the minimum flight altitudes of aircraft around the airport. Now, what are the fixed base operators or the businesses responsible for? They're responsible for scheduling, for flights, for passenger services. Now, the main operator at the airport is Hawthorne Airport LOC, the master tenant. And two companies affiliated with them are Jet Center LA and Advanced Air. There's other companies, of course, at the airport. Not all of them are listed here, but such as Surf Air, Hawthorne Hangar Operations, HHO, Star Helicopters, Cal Air Aviation. We have flight schools like Beach Cities Aviation Academy and A&E Flight Club. Now, the airport is actually a division of the Public Works Department. And at the airport, the city staff is composed of, at this point, five individuals. The airport manager, myself, the public works technician at the front desk of our office, and three airport maintenance workers, three full-time field staff. Now, as far as airport data, I often question is how many operations do we have at the airport? And an operation is considered either one landing or one takeoff. So if an airplane lands and takes off, that would be two operations. We average anywhere between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty-five per day. Now, how many aircraft are based at Hawthorne Airport? This fluctuates, but approximately a hundred and eighty at this time. Of that, composed of fourteen helicopters, eleven jets, and approximately a hundred and fifty-five single and multi-engine aircraft. Now, air traffic history, another common question is, how many operations do you have annually? Well, if you see the chart here on the left and a visual representation on the right with the bar chart, it varies, but on average, we hover somewhere between sixty thousand to eighty thousand operations. You'll see some lows, for example, during the pandemic when we went to fifty-eight, fifty-seven. And now we're picking up, we're up to sixty-seven thousand for twenty, twenty-two. But on average, we always stay within that range, between sixty to eighty thousand. Now, a couple of dates to mention, history of the airport. Nineteen forty-eight is when the airport officially opened. Sixty-one is when the air traffic control tower began operations. Sixty-six is when the administration terminal building also began operations. And two thousand and five, that's when the city entered into the master ground lease agreement with Hawthorne Airport LOC. Now, as far as our airport revenue, you'll see at the bottom right there, we're a little bit over a million, a million forty-four thousand. But in the pie chart, you'll notice that the biggest contributor, sixty percent, that's from our master ground lease agreement. That's where we get sixty percent, the majority of our revenue. The second biggest source, it comes from our fuel concession fee that we have with Hawthorne Airport LOC with Advanced Air. And then we have smaller chunks, as you see they're divided up. But the majority, once again, comes from the master ground and from the fuel concession fee. Now, there's a note there at the bottom, per FAA rules, all the revenues that we generate at the airport were required to only use them at the airport. They have to be reinvested for either capital improvement projects or for operational costs at the airport. Now, our operations budget or our expenses basically are listed here. I won't go through every single one, but you see that our total budget, the most current one is a little bit over a million. A million ninety-nine thousand is where we're hovering. Now, to understand our funding from the FAA, this is something new, an update. We get money from the FAA through what they call the Airport Improvement Program. These are FAA annual entitlements that are based on the number of employments at the airport. Employments are the number of passengers aboard an aircraft. But it has to be very specific boarding. It has to be for scheduled flights, for something that is paid for. So your typical private aircraft, that wouldn't qualify as an employment. And the other category or restriction is what type of airport. So, and I'll explain further down. So the FAA funding can only be used for approved projects such as rehabbing the runway or the taxiways. And our airport is categorized as what's called a general aviation airport, a general aviation reliever airport, actually. Many times, we're referred to as the fifth runway to LAX because we relieve a lot of the traffic coming in to LAX. Now, employments are reported to the Department of Transportation by either the individual businesses or by the airport sponsor, which would be the city. Now, this is a formula they use to fund us. If we're under ten thousand annual employments, we receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year from the FAA. If you're over ten thousand, you receive a million dollars from the FAA. But here's the good news. We also have what's called discretionary funding, and we've been very fortunate that the FAA is very cooperative with us. And whenever we've had projects that have exceeded that pool that we can save up, they've always come through by giving us discretionary funding from that additional pool. In the left, you'll see the chart there. It'll show you the number of employments. And as you can tell, we've never come close to the ten thousand employments to be able to qualify for the million dollars. However, we receive discretionary funding from the FAA. Now, in this slide, you'll see the projects that have been funded by the FAA in the last ten years, from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty-one. So we've received oh, close to four million dollars from the FAA. And the good news is that ninety percent of that is funded by the FAA. Five percent comes from CAS grant, and the city only has to put five percent. So you're talking about, I guess, five cents on the dollar, which is really beneficial in order for us to maintain our airport. Some of the big projects there in twenty-twelve, the air traffic control, fire and life safety project, are over, over a million dollars. And the most recent one, twenty-twenty-one, when we reconstructed and rehabbed our taxiways at about a million two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, landing fees, that was a topic that was brought up about a year ago as well, so we have an update on that. A landing fee is basically a fee we're charged, paid by an aircraft for landing at a particular airport. Now, city conducted research regarding landing fees a little bit over a year ago. And it was decided that it wasn't really the best course of action or beneficial for the following reasons. One is that landing fees would actually discourage air traffic into the airport. And that would affect our second biggest source of revenue, which is our revenue from our fuel concession fees. So that's something that we have a serious concern about. The second is that the FAA doesn't intend to look favorably on landing fees because it discourages air travel. It doesn't promote aviation transportation. Third, too, also is that we discovered that the majority of general aviation airports do not charge landing fees. Actually, in Southern California, I'm only aware of one airport, and that's Santa Monica that charges landing fees. General aviation, I should say. Commercial airports, Part 139, that would be different. That's common for them, such as LAX. But for general aviation airports, it's only Santa Monica in this area. And as we know, the plans in Santa Monica, their, their plans are to close that airport. And the last reason is that landing fees have been actually legally challenged by various organizations because they're seen as discriminatory based on how they're applied and that they discourage air transportation. Now, in this slide, we're talking about timeline of improvements to the airport by Hawthorne Airport LOC, which is our master tenant. I won't go through each one. I'll just mention two or three. The largest ones, two thousand nine, hangars five through thirteen were built. That was twenty-four thousand square feet of new hangars at close to two million dollars. In twenty-sixteen, we had hangars sixteen and seventeen that were built. That was about forty-three thousand square feet of new hangar and seventy-five hundred feet of new office space. That was close to six million dollars. And in twenty-nineteen, hangars twenty-nine through thirty-four, so what we call the North Hangar Development Project, that brought us sixty-three thousand square feet of new hangars, and that was close to eleven million dollars of investment. Now visually, so you can see what I'm talking about, in twenty-sixteen, on the upper left here, you'll see the new advanced air offices. And on the right and bottom, you'll see hangars sixteen and seventeen. The pictures really don't do justice because these are huge hangars. You're looking at hangars that are approximately a hundred and eighty feet wide by maybe a hundred and twenty feet deep. So these are quite large structures. And in twenty-nineteen, the new hangars twenty-nine through thirty-four were built. On the left and the right, you'll see these hangars are large. And in the middle, we have our new PD helicopter hangar for Air Fifty-Five, for MD five hundred helicopter. Here, we have Air Fifty-Five on the left inside our Hawthorne PD hangar. And on the right, we have an aircraft, the Coast Guard Dolphin that often visits our airport. And the last slide here before concluding, on the left, we have a King Air three fifty, that's a turboprop. That's owned by Advanced Air, and that's a plane that's used for their air charter services. And on the right, maybe one of the biggest aircraft that visit our airport or use at our airport, a G five fifty Gulfstream. So in conclusion, if I had to use a word for the airport, I think it's partnership. It's partnership between us, the FAA, and Hawthorne Airport LOC. It's the ability for us to work together with the FAA and Hawthorne Airport LOC that allows us to maintain safety and be efficient at the airport. We benefit from increased funding from the FAA in order to maintain our runway and taxiways. And we also benefit from Hawthorne Airport LOC because we use their investments to improve the airport. That partnership is what makes the airport an attractive location for air travel and a key hub among Southern California airports. We comply with the FAA and with their rules and regulations, and we benefit from their funding. And once again, this is what allows us to be successful and have a safe and efficient airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Guido.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Don't go away, Guidi.
And then, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions because a lot of people continue to complain about noise, right?
True.
That the planes, especially, you know, you mentioned those G five five zero, right?
The G five fifty, yeah.
The big little jets that now, you know, takes off. You know, basically, they have to take off all over the Ramona tracks, all the way to Manhattan Beach, right, to, to get the speed and the altitude. So a lot of people complain, right, because the, the airport, when it was built, the, the little plane's supposed to turn right on Hawthorne Boulevard, they use called one oh seven freeway on the terms of the language. So now, all these jets, right, are taking off over our house. And even people in Manhattan Beach and in, in Holly Glen, all complaining about the noise. So when are they going to do another noise study? When is that scheduled?
Well, we actually completed one last year.
Last year, yes.
Yes, okay. And our next step is we have to submit the results to the FAA and amend what's called the Noise Compatibility Program. Then we will hear back from the FAA as far as what kind of rules and requirements they'll have to update the NCP. And then after that would be the next step as to if we are able to apply for mitigation grants.
So, and, and, and one of the things, Guidi, to think, keep in mind, because the last time, the map didn't extend, say, all the way past Hawthorne Boulevard, right? Because they have this map that for the noise, for them to measure the noise.
The noise exposure map.
Exposure map, exactly. So they didn't go far enough into the communities where now this jet is taking. So the next time we did that study, I want that map to be extended.
Okay, I understand.
Right? So, so then people could be much more happy that we're going to do it. And then maybe there will be some programs down the road that could be benefit to the community, like, say, retrofit the windows or some other stuff like that, right? Because right now, we don't qualify for that because they said that map doesn't extend all the way to those, to those community. The other thing that I wanted to mention is about, there was a lot of talk about redoing the fence around the airport, any...
Perimeter fence?
Yes.
Yeah. Actually, yes. We were gonna actually schedule to do that within a year or two. But after meeting with the FAA, they're prioritizing another project, which we're actually in the middle of the design right now. We're at thirty percent. We're designing new signage and lighting for the airport. So our plan is to replace all the runways, all the taxiway lighting, our beacon, some obstruction lights, and all the location signs, and hopefully go to construction in twenty-twenty-five. So if all works well, we'll have beautiful lights by twenty-twenty-five.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to find out, you talked about the lease component was sixty percent.
Yes.
So does that mean that it's fully leased out? Are there any availability of potential leases or it's fully leased out?
It's, at this time, it's fully leased out.
That was it?
Yes.
Thank you, Guido. Great presentation, great visuals there, too. I have a couple of questions. And I have a couple of disagreements.
Okay.
Why didn't, why didn't we implement in advance of our agreement to potentially in the future, and I'm talking way back, make landing fee increases? The reason I say this is because, similar to some of the questions that were posed here, the City of Inglewood provides funding to homeowners for additional window because of airport, airport noise, right? And they have to be within a certain yards or miles, unable to inquire that. I know you mentioned earlier that any monies that is received by the airport via the city has to be used on the airport. However, throughout the years, we've had folks complain and talk about noise, et cetera. My, my follow-up question to is, to that is, if we had increased landing fees or can increase landing fees, why then can't we, at that point, help residents that are suffering from the noise from the airport and implement windows? The, the type that has the, you know, the, you know, the one that has the paneling and whatnot to...
The mitigation, yeah.
Right, for mitigation purposes, because I know, I understand what you're saying, that it's a deterrent for those looking to fly into Hawthorne, that they might not want to fly into Hawthorne because of fees. I, I don't necessarily agree with that. And, and, and the other reason for that is because they're already arriving at Hawthorne to frequent SoCal over there, basketball, football.
Stadium.
The stadiums, and it's just growing and growing and growing over there. We're hop, skip, and a jump. They don't want to use LAX because paparazzi purposes. They want to stay, you know, hidden. So how easier than to, to arrive at Hawthorne Airport and just be able to get on Prairie Avenue and get to your destination, then back at, to the airport to fly back out? So I don't necessarily believe that they won't come. They're not very, you know, they don't like that. Do you know, at any given time, did we ever implement a fee increase?
To my knowledge, no. No, to my knowledge, we've, we've never had actual landing fees. It was a year, approximately a year ago, when we started to talk.
Right.
Yes.
So I'd like to continue to, to work on that. I believe there's great benefit. More importantly, it's just growing. Our airport continues to grow for the various reasons that are the South Bay region, the community is growing, in, in this area, across the street, et cetera. So definitely look at that. I know you said that we're, we're almost built out at the airport. I want to see that the city gets what they're supposed to get, which is Public Works Department there. They're supposed to have a, a building built for us, and that hasn't happened in over four years. So I'd like to see that happen and get that built out to help our employees, because that's what was promised. And then I want to know, who's the council member that sits on the noise mitigation?
Oh, you're talking about the CNC, the community?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Valentine used to be on there, and we just need a new council member to be assigned to the, to the CNC.
Can you bring that back to us on the agenda for the next agenda? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Guidi. Thank you, Guido. It's an up and coming, our airport has so much potential, even further potential than what it has. And we have, like, famous movie stars that even have their hangars there, so I don't think, I mean, we want to be as discreet as possible. We don't want to name the names, but, you know.
They already know.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just try to be private.
I duck and cover when he's overhead.
All right. Thank you, Guido.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, guys. Okay, presentations are over. Mr. City Attorney, to go back to oral communications, do we need the clerk to repeat the guidelines? Would it be wise to?
Yes, it would be wise to.
Guidelines, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the council, the city council, from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay. John Jefferson? Mr. John L. Jefferson? Serving a dual role as resident and pastor.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor, and again, fellow council members and city officials. I'm here to, on behalf of the Hawthorne Law I'm here to, on behalf of the Hawthorne-Londale Ministerial Association, one, to invite each and every one of you to, on May fourth at seven PM at Dale Air Baptist Church for the National Day of Prayer. Dale Air will be hosting the city and all the other churches within our community on that day. We're continuing our theme as we started out in March of this year, healing, hope, and help for the city of Hawthorne. We will continue to put our focus on that as a community of faith. Also, asking the council, now I'm flipping hats, asking the council on behalf of the residents, homeless residents in our city, to set aside some funds for housing for single fathers. The housing resource person and I, we are stressed out. All of the housing and most of the shelters are set up for mothers with children. Just this week alone, we had six fathers coming in, and today, we had a father with six kids, don't have no place to go. So as you all are looking at the housing and the funding for homelessness, we want you to consider setting aside funding for single fathers with children. There's a large number of our fathers that need help and support out there in this community. And we're partnering, our Community Development Corporation and our church are partnering with the Homeless Association here in Hawthorne to provide meals and personal hygines for the families and for the homeless persons within our community. We're still continuing to do that. Changing hats again, I'm a resident on one hundred and fifteenth Street and Cimarron. They start at St. Andrew Place, and by the time they get in front of my house, they got to be up to at least a hundred miles an hour flying. We've done studies, we've filed a petition, and we never meet the requirement. We need speed bumps on one hundred and fifteenth between Wilton Place and Van Ness. Other schools in our city have speed bumps around them, Cimarron School needs speed bumps. Now the parents are trying to block the streets so that people can't go through speeding, but on any given day, when they go through as fast as they can, my grass bow down to them as they go by. So we need some speed bumps on one hundred and fifteenth Street around Cimarron High School. Whatever y'all need to do to make it happen, please do. The residents and the children need that. And then, lastly...
Finish your statement, sir.
Lastly, I want to thank the city and especially Alex Montero and the community partners on last Sunday, this past Sunday, helped me celebrate twenty-three years of pastoral ministry and support for this community. I want to say thank you. It's a pleasure serving this community, serving the families in this community, serving every person in this community. We are stronger, we are bolder, and we shall get bigger. Thank you. God bless you.
And congratulations once again, Pastor. It was a beautiful ceremony at your church on Sunday, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Patricia Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potemans, City Council. We are having at the chamber our Cinco de Mayo. We're having it a day before, on the fourth instead of the fifth, because so many people said they could not make it on the fifth because they were obligated to other events. Okay. So, on May fourth, we're gonna have our Cinco de Mayo mixer at the chamber from five-thirty to seven-thirty. There will be a lot of money given out for prizes, indoor prizes, and fifty-fifty, and a lot of food, so I hope that you all can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council? Please form a line. Orman, go ahead. Whoever, please line up behind them. Anybody else wishing to address the council?
Hi, good evening. Ruben Sanchez, President of the North Hawthorne Community Association. I'm here because, I know, about a month ago, we addressed the issue with the businesses in the northern part of Hawthorne, that they were having a lot of issues with the vagrants out there. And we had the trailer out there come out, and I wanted to thank the Hawthorne Police Department for doing such a great job. The reason that we kind of held back a bit, because we wanted to see what was going to be the outcome, and so far, from all the businesses, they're very grateful, they're very thankful for what you've done, Mr. Chief, and the rest of the police officers that were out there. Also, I think the City Manager was out there as well, thank you very much. We had some people out there where they were expressing concerns. One thing that was coming about is that these vagrants are usually there, they're having issues, they're assaulting a lot of the employees, a lot of the business owners, but it was very scary to know that there was really no support, only besides the police department, they were having no support from the politician aspect. And I asked them to watch some of the videos. I asked them, say, hey, you gotta watch some of these videos on YouTube and how the politicians are talking about helping homeless and so on, but there's nothing focused on the vagrants, on these assaults. There's a lot of female employees there that are being threatened, saying, there's some vagrants out there saying, hey, I'm gonna rape you when I see you catch you by yourself. That's the kind of, that's the work environment that some of these people are going into. And we need that support, not only in Northern Hawthorne, but throughout the city. This is going on, and I haven't heard any one of you address the issue when it comes to the vagrants. Because you guys want to picture them as homeless people, which we are helping and supporting, we have housing, we have resources, but everyone has to understand that that's painted with a broad brush. Vagrants are the people that don't want the assistance. Dulce will tell you, the number one thing right away she'll tell you, if they don't want the help, we can't do anything for them. You know? And that's the number one rule. And a lot of the individuals that you see out there just roaming around in the middle of the night or sleeping next to the, they don't want the help. So we have to start working for the safety of the community, for the safety of our business owners, that they need to feel supported, especially from you as the politicians. I know it's election year, not that long ago, and it's not a good thing to talk about homeless or so on, but you guys have to say, have to protect the safety of our business owners, because no one has reached out. If it wasn't for our police department, and, you know, I was privileged in going and translating, and that's the reason I know a little bit more about it when I speak to some of these business owners, and they fear for their lives. And so far, we're out there to help. And one other thing that was brought up, also, they need to start looking, we need to start looking at where the money is going in our city. Like, right now, Mr. Vargas, you gave a directive not that long ago, I think, well, a couple of months ago, in regards of the telehealth van of data. We're losing, we're hemorrhaging money with the telehealth van, and we still have no data. Over half a million dollars have already been spent, and no one has said anything. There's committees for other things, but you guys are not doing committees to monitor the money that's being spent. You need to bring that back, we need to get that information to the residents, and the business owners would like that. Thank you so much, have a blessed day. Service for one, service for all, okay?
Call Orman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, other council members, city staff, and neighbors. I have a question on item number nineteen on tonight's agenda, which involves a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriation and funds to nonprofits in the city of Hawthorne. I was unable to view the supporting documents on that, so I would really appreciate it if you could give us an explanation of how the nonprofits are going to be selected, who's going to be eligible for those grants, does that include religious organizations? And also, if the nonprofits are going to be able to get money from the city, is there any possibility that that could happen in lieu of the fireworks sales, which have been so controversial for so long? So some information on that particular item would be very much appreciated. And on a different subject, going to the veteran housing issue, many of you have heard on the news about the redevelopment that's happening up at the West L A V A, and I wanted to mention to you that this coming Tuesday, May second, there's going to be the ribbon-cutting ceremony for two more of the remodeled buildings, and also for the groundbreaking ceremony for the first of the new construction units that's going to be going in up there. So I would imagine there'll be a lot of news coverage on Tuesday evening. Very much encourage our residents to take a look at that coverage. What's being done up at West L A for the homeless veterans is remarkable. Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the City Council? Anyone? Okay. If not, oral communications is close ordered. All right, so we'll take general matters, item nine out of order. Madam Clerk, can you please read item nine into the record, and we're gonna have a presentation on this. Just a moment, sir. Yeah, item nine.
Item nine, Flashvote Services Anexing Survey Results. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the City Council receive and file.
Please proceed, sir, with your presentation.
Excellent, thanks, everyone, City Council, staff, and the public. My name's Kevin Lyons, I'm a co-founder and chief scientist of Flashvote, and we do scientific surveys for communities all across the country, and we're delighted to work with City Manager. And the project that we had was to determine what was the sentiment in the unincorporated areas of Hawthorne as to their interest, or not interest, in possible incorporation. And what we'll go through in order will be kind of a summary of the project and how we approached getting the data that you need. We'll talk through the results, give you the conclusions from the survey, and then, of course, take your questions. And thank you very much, by the way, for moving up, given my flight back. Okay, so the project, if you can see the pictures on the screen, there were four areas, three really, because the one to the far east was tiny, that were identified as next to Hawthorne, unincorporated, potential candidates for incorporation to join the city, and that we targeted with our outreach for survey data. The questions that we wanted to answer essentially was, is there interest in Hawthorne incorporation or not? Are there differences, maybe, even by these little areas? Maybe they have different opinions about the matter. And then also, you know, what makes people interested or not? Kind of go to that next level of detail that might be interesting and helpful as you think about that potential issue, and then any other insights that came out of the data. So the methodology is, we looked at that population and using, basically, a super-high-end political database that we have access to, determined there was about seven and a half thousand people in all those areas. We were able to get mobile phone numbers for five-point-two-thousand of them, so about fifty-two-hundred, a little over. And after preparing the survey, we collected the data from March eighth to March eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. The goal was to get a hundred responses or more, a hundred is about plus or minus ten percent, so that gives you a pretty good, pretty good sense of where people are, are they over here, are they over here, for sure? And we were able to get actually about a hundred and fifty from our target, and also we got some open responses, which is always interesting, as I'll explain later, because that might give you a sense of if there's any kind of noise organized one way or another out there. Okay. So, the questions that we went with, first was to confirm that our targeting is working, which is, is your home just outside of the city of Hawthorne in an unincorporated area of Los Angeles County? Okay? The second question, what is your overall impression of the city of Hawthorne services? So policing, trash, planning, zoning, homeless services, et cetera, compared to your current services from Los Angeles County? So that was to get a baseline of the perception of where they are relative to what they'd be joining, and that turned out to be pretty interesting. Then the third question is the more direct, would you support or oppose your home and the unincorporated area where you live becoming part of the city of Hawthorne? It's kind of a direct ask. And then the last one, to get more color, more details on what people are thinking, last question, which of the following, if any, would you expect from possible incorporation into the city of Hawthorne? And there we have a lot of kind of good versus bad choices that people can make. Okay. So, jumping into the results from question one, the people who were, yes, they live there and they're an owner of the home, and yes, I'm a renter of a home, came in at about eighty-seven percent of our target. About six percent of people weren't sure, it's common, not everyone knows exactly where their boundary is, or whether they're incorporated or not. A lot of people get confused by post offices as well. And about seven percent were a no. So that was successful. Then to number two, so what is your overall impression of the city of Hawthorne services? And the results from these areas all lumped together. If you look at the top, the city of Hawthorne seems a lot worse or a little worse, was about forty-two percent. And then the city of Hawthorne seems a little better or a lot better, was about twenty-six percent. So there's a slight bias there towards thinking that the services, if they were to incorporate, would get worse rather than better. And as we'll see, that actually varies dramatically by the area. Question three was the one, would you support or oppose your home becoming part of the city of Hawthorne? And there, what we saw is, again, kind of matching up with that a little bit, a slight overall opposition, strongly opposed and somewhat opposed, were about forty-five percent compared to the somewhat support and strongly support, about thirty-three percent. A slight, slight difference against overall, including all the areas lumped together. If we looked at the question four, now we can look at some of these, some of the thinking behind these opinions. So the first one is, you know, what would happen with possible incorporation? And we compare lower taxes to higher taxes. You can see there's a slight perception that taxes might be higher. As we go down to worse services or better service, there's actually an overall perception that the services will get better. So now you're in that kind of trade-off zone, is it worth paying more for better services? Because there's nothing wrong with taxes going up for people, if you're also getting some level of better services, it matches that. We see that all over the place. And the last one was, higher crime or lower crime? Pretty much a perfect wash. No real opinion one way or the other. And then the more responsive local government versus less responsive local government, that was a two-to-one, very much in favor. So there is that sense of the local control and the local responsiveness that is appealing to people. Okay. We also have other results through filters built into the survey. You can see some of the ways you can slice and dice, the age, gender, the areas overall, the west versus east, which was most interesting, and then the member panel, which I'll explain, it's a way of looking at the people that we selected to take the survey versus the people that just took the survey, kind of found it and took it on their own. The first insight additional from that was looking at the west versus east. And so what we've highlighted here with a filter showing you the east side chunk versus the west side, is that the opposition in the west is strong, and the support in the east is strong. So you can see there's kind of an opposite effect when you look at those two areas. And the north is kind of in the middle, actually, kind of neutral. We also looked at homeownership versus renters to see if that was in effect, and you can imagine some of those areas have more homeowners versus renters, that would be a factor in what you see. And for Q three, when we looked at the yes, I'm an owner of a home versus a renter, so the blue is the owners and the red is the renters, we see the opposition is stronger among homeowners, a little over two-to-one. And the renters are also more neutral, not as, not going to be as maybe on top of the issue, frankly, because they don't have that much skin in the game compared to the homeowners typically, we'll see that. And then the support is about equal when you compare them. So really, the overall effect is that the homeowners are more opposed than neutral compared to renters. And then if we look at that service perception, and we use that as a filter applied to the questions, I'll highlight question three, and what you see here is basically, the blue is the city of Hawthorne seems a lot worse, as expected, the worse that people think the services would get if they were incorporated, the more they're opposed. And then if you swing all the way back down, you'll see the people that thought the city of Hawthorne seems a lot better, strongly support, like seventy percent support, compared to over seventy percent opposed. So that's really a key variable in thinking about the appeal of incorporation for people. Okay. And the one last insight that I mentioned earlier, we do have the panel members in blue, so that's, again, the people that we reached out to and targeted for survey data, for survey responses. The red is the people that somehow found it, probably shared it with friends, it's what happens with a typical unscientific survey, you'll kind of get a well-organized group or maybe one side of an issue, and three-to-one, almost, strongly opposed. So if you do hear noise, a lot of voices against this kind of a thing, that would be, that's what we'd expect, basically, instead of like loud noise in favor of something like this in the community. Okay, so overall conclusions, is there... Okay, so overall conclusions, is there interest in Hawthorne incorporation? The overall sentiment is slightly against, but it varies by those areas, you know, there are differences by areas, the west is not that favorable, the east is very favorable. And what's behind that, well, the perceived service quality relative to what they have right now in those areas, presumably quite different based on the responses, and the homeownership as well, because the homeowners tend to go slightly against compared to the renters. And the other useful insight here really is that there may be, you know, the opposition may feel louder, more organized than it actually is, because as you've seen, it's kind of a split, and frankly, there are areas that support. And be happy to take your questions, hopefully that was helpful.
Through the chair. This sum up was pretty split, on the east, a little bit greater support than the west, regardless of interest in incorporation, everybody believes that they'll get better services.
So actually, the belief of better services, if I can go back to that, a lot of data I just threw at you. Yeah, so... The opposition, basically, if you can see this, the city of Hawthorne seems a lot worse or a little worse, is actually slightly larger than seems better, or a lot better, compared to where they are right now. And when we look at the support, it matches up with that. So the more you think the services will get better with incorporation, the more you support it. So slight overall against, slight overall perception that services will get a little worse. Thanks for the question. Anyone else?
The chair.
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to ask if there's maybe another part of your, what do you call this, survey? That could quantify cost for the number of residents in those LA County homes, rental units, et cetera. What are we looking at as far as dollar amounts? Hypothetically speaking, if the city were to inquire annexation, what would that cost the city with regards to services? That's where I'm trying to go.
Yeah, I think that would be a great question for your finance team.
Okay. So how many homes, again, how many people in the incorporated? Seven hundred thousand?
About seven and a half thousand people, yeah, 7,500 roughly.
Okay.
Anyone else?
You could run some numbers with that, probably.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right, well, thank you very much, if you have other questions, my contact info is available, thanks.
So I make a motion to accept and receive the report.
So move.
Take it. Please vote. Thank you, sir.
Voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Madam clerk, we have, can we have your... Does Deepak Chopra have a presentation today?
Mr. Mayor, I have six items on the consent calendar, they are items two through seven for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for April 25th, 2023. Item four, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meeting of March 14th, 2023, the special meeting of March 21st, 2023, and the regular meeting of March 28th, 2023. Item five, resolution number 8400, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, designating authorized agents to execute for and on the behalf of the city of Hawthorne for financial assistance from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, and the California Office of Emergency Services for recovering costs associated with declared emergencies. Item six, resolution 8401, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California proclaiming April 30th, 2023 through May 6th, 2023, as municipal clerks weaken Hawthorne. Item seven, resolution number 8402, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, establishing a housing trust fund and adopting housing trust fund guidelines for adoption.
I move. Take it.
I'd like to pull seven for discussion.
Would you like to discuss now? Because we already made motion. And second...
Oh, sorry, yes. So I had a few questions. When I was reading it, it talked about that the city council is responsible for governing it. And so I wanted to know, with the Housing Department, Kimberly Mack, would she be the point person for this particular program, city manager?
If I may, that person, the person that will lead has not been designated yet, most likely it'll be either Ms. Mack or the city manager. We wanted to set this up as, as you know, with the housing element that has been certified, the city's looking at developing over 1,000 units of housing, and that city will not have sufficient funds to develop 1,000 units. So we need to set up the housing trust as a form of getting additional grants from the state. So right now, it's at a very infant stage, but we needed to do this, there are some deadlines for certain grants, so we wanted to set up the housing trust so that we'll be eligible to apply for some grants. And I think in the coming council meeting, maybe the next one, we're gonna have a resolution to apply for certain grants based on this housing trust. For, there are immediate grants that we could apply for, which is deals with matching funds for the city-owned land that's gonna be used for affordable housing development, but it's the, in terms of the guideline of the designated person, we're gonna decide on that that's not what's most important here, the resolution is to set up the trust fund so that we could be eligible for grant applications.
Right, I understand that. I was just wondering who would be responsible for this particular, like applying for the grants, right? I know that there's tons of grants out there, and I just wanted to know who would be the person responsible for grants, would it be the council, or would it be, you know, the housing department?
No, it would be, the grant applications would go through a consultant that's associated with this, and then probably the city manager would be entrusted with that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, so, all right, please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Next, we have a public hearing, so madam clerk, can you read item eight into the record?
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft 2023-2024 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs. No written communications were received. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing and receive comments on the draft 2023-2024 Action Plan for the Use of Community Development Block Grant and Investment Partnership Funds. Adopt 2023-2024 Action Plan and authorize the city manager or designate to submit the plan and any necessary amendments to the plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Three, provide city staff with a methodology to distribute funds should the city's 2023-2024 CDBG and home allocation increase or decrease. Four, authorize the city managers or designate to negotiate, execute, and amend contracts with subrecipients or professional service providers as necessary to implement the CDBG and home projects identified in the 2023-2024 Action Plan. Five, authorize the city manager or designate to execute, amend, and submit to HUD all plans and documents necessary to administer the 2023-2024 CDBG and home programs. And six, authorize the appropriation of funds for the 2023-2024 CDBG and home programs.
Okay, we do have a presentation from Mr. David Munoz. Okay, go ahead and proceed with that, sir. Ten-minute presentation, please.
Well, good evening, mayor, members of the council, appreciate you all taking the time tonight to host this public hearing on the 2324 Action Plan regarding the Community Development or CDBG and Home Investment Partnerships or Home Funds. To give you a brief introduction or agenda on what we'll go over today, we'll begin with a background on the CDBG and home programs. We'll follow that up with a description of the resources that are available under each of those respective programs over the next program year. Then we'll kind of discuss the specifics of that action plan, getting into the details of the activities that were selected to be funded next year and what their accomplishment goals would be. And then we'll finish it off with the recommendations, which were just read by the city clerk. So, beginning with some of the background, the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships programs are administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, meaning it is a federal program. HUD, in turn, provides annual grants to entitlement communities, much like the city of Hawthorne, entitlement meaning that the city automatically receives this allocation without having to competitively apply for those funds. The city's annual allocation is based on a formula that HUD has designed based on various numbers of factors such as population size, housing, and economic development information. Based on those statistics and the formula, it pops out a certain allocation for each of those respective programs, one being CDBG and then the other being home. Each of those programs, there are a set of eligible activities that you all can then utilize those funds for. Under CDBG, you have a little bit more flexibility, it expands from housing, public services, you could do housing, commercial rehabilitation type programs, which you all have funded in the past. And then under the home investment partnerships, much like the name sounds, it's really restricted to housing-type activities. To kind of guide the use and investment of funds, there are a couple of planning documents that the city prepares, the first being the five-year, or what is known as the five-year consolidated plan. So in 2020, May of 2020, the city adopted the five-year consolidated plan, which outlined the six high priority goals and needs that needed to be addressed, which you see on the screen here, beginning with affordable housing, public services, making sure that those are being provided to residents, fair housing and landlord-tenant mediation services, public facilities and infrastructure improvements, economic development opportunities, and then lastly, the COVID-19 response. To ensure that the city is investing its funds in accordance with those five needs or goals, the city prepares annual action plans. And so as you can see, the 2023-24 Action Plan is the fourth year of that five-year cycle, meaning that there's one more action plan left to kind of accomplish what we had set out as part of that five-year consolidated plan. If we were to just look at this year, or the upcoming year, which begins July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, the city has a total of about $1.8 million that are available to invest in projects. Specifically, it has $1,215,028 in CDBG funds and $635,813,000 in home funds. Now again, as I had explained a little bit earlier, each one of those programs, obviously you receive a separate allocation or a distinct amount, but also there's different types of programs and requirements associated with each. Under the CDBG program, there are three major categories where you can utilize your funds, the first being administration, the second being public services, and then the third being capital improvements. Under administration, a maximum of 20% of your annual allocation can be utilized for administrative-related costs. That includes, you know, doing the outreach to the service providers, reviewing their applications, doing an eligibility review, doing an environmental assessment, going and doing the contracts, the action plan, the capers, and so forth. Then you have public service, which is capped at 15% of your annual allocation, and so that's a lot of your nonprofit partners that are providing a lot of those services to the low-income residents of Hawthorne. And finally, the remainder of funds can be utilized towards capital improvement, so there's not necessarily a cap or a floor there, it's just really the remainder. So really, again, those are caps, you're not required to invest the full amount, but you're not allowed to invest beyond that amount. So with that framework in mind, really, the most competitive source of funds is the public service funds, which is the smallest portion of those funds. To ensure that the city is allowing for nonprofits to apply, we go through a notice of funding availability process. That was initiated back in December, when we issued a public notice, we emailed all of the existing nonprofit organizations, as well as any other nonprofit organizations that reached out to the Housing Department. As a result of those outreach efforts, we received a total of eight applications, seven of those were from service providers, six nonprofits, one for-profit, and then one from a fair housing agency, which you all are required to fund based on the HUD regulations. And then the last one would have been one capital improvement project from the Public Works Department from the city of Hawthorne. Once we received all the applications, we assessed them for eligibility with the program requirements, did some interviews with some of the new agencies to assess their capacity to implement these programs, and then developed what we are presenting today, which is the action plan and the recommended funding levels for each of those respective agencies based on their proposed accomplishment goals. So, under CDBG, a total of $243,005 would be allocated towards administration activities. Under that bucket, there's two activities, so you have your program administration with about $213,000, you have your fair housing services provider at $30,000 to assist 250 people. Then you have your public services, so currently, this budget has it maxed out at the 15%, which comes out to $182,254. So in this action plan, there were five public agencies or nonprofits that were selected to implement these five activities. So South Bay Workforce Investment Board with the teen center, awarded $96,150 to assist 90 youth, and these are unduplicated, by the way, so once a child receives service at the teen center, they're no longer counted again as part of the 90. As part of their quarterly reporting, we request that they tell us how many times that child may have re-attended, because that helps us tell the full story of, well, you know, 90,000 for 90 youth, is that worth the money? Maybe when we're able to tell you the full story of, yeah, but that child comes to the teen center every day, five days a week, you know, 52 days or 52 weeks of the year, then you can kind of see the reason why there's that level of investment. New Star Family Justice Center, $24,776 to assist 30 people. Family Promise of the South Bay, housing stabilization services to individuals who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, to assist 10 individuals. Catholic Charities of LA with St. Margaret's Emergency Assistance, $21,776 to assist 140 Hawthorne residents. Richstone Family Center, providing behavioral health services, $19,776 to assist 25 unduplicated residents. And then lastly, under the capital improvement section, a total investment of $789,769 with two activities, one being a Section 108 loan repayment for a total of $369,517. Fun fact, this is the last year of that Section 108 loan repayment, so starting next year's action plan, those funds will now be available for you all to actually invest in other capital-related projects and activities. You all have been paying this loan off since, I believe, 2017, 2018, and so that's taken up a good chunk of funds that could, that will be allocated elsewhere next year. And then lastly, you have the Alley Reconstruction Project, which is part of your Public Works Department, $420,252. We did a low-mod area analysis, and based on where those improvements are being made, an estimated 12,385 people would benefit from that project. an estimated 12,385 people would benefit from that project. Then, under the home program, very similar, just different caps. As I had said, there's different requirements for each program. So, under administration for home, instead of 20%, there is a maximum of 10%. And then, there is a second component, which is community housing development organizations. The program attempts to incentivize those partnerships. And as part of that, a minimum of 15% must be set aside to kind of foster that partnership. So this, that chodo set aside is the only component of your budget where you are required to put a minimum amount there. The others are caps. And then lastly is your housing projects, that becomes a balance of funds. Currently, the main project is the rental rehabilitation project, but as part of this year's action plan, kind of looking forward, the city intends to kind of set those funds aside for an acquisition rehab resale project, investing a total of $476,860 with the goal of hopefully getting like a duplex, two households, housing units. And we'll step into the recommendations. Obviously, conduct the public hearing to receive any comments from the public regarding the draft 23-24 Action Plan and the use of CDBG and home funds. Adopt the action plan and authorize the submittal of the plan to HUD, which is due by May 15th. And then provide city staff with a methodology for distributing the funds should the city's annual allocation increase or decrease, which was a part of the staff report, just basically saying that we would maintain all funding levels commensurate to where they are currently, based on the proportion. Last year, it became an issue because the allocations came out late. This year, fortunately, HUD actually announced them prior to us developing the action plan. So the likelihood of that happening is very low. But nonetheless, wanted to kind of make sure that we got your approval to prevent any roadblocks in the future and ensure that this is a smooth process going forward. And then lastly, authorize the appropriation of those funds for the 23-24 CDBG and home programs. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. I have a few questions. I want to see how we can maybe change it up, because this becomes so regular, if you will. I mean, year after year, reporting out on CDBG, it looks like the same group of people, the same type of service, et cetera, et cetera. And I know our city's growing. And so, I want to be able to provide opportunities across the board. Having said that, there's a few that I noticed have large amounts that they're being received, especially the public services, that I really think we need to go back and see whether or not that's the actual population they're serving for the purpose of, you know, we've been shut down for three years. So they're just starting back up, right? Everybody's looking for funding, everybody's looking for money. So having said that, I want to see, you know, what that looks like as far as additional dollars allocated for public services with maybe more service providers. And then, at the same time, there is an authorization for city manager designate to negotiate or execute contracts with subscribers and/or professional services. If we've been doing this for so long, you know, why do we continuously have to use, and I'm not using you, consultants, right? If there's a, if there's a savings, a cost there that we could save and allocate that to another, say, public service, why not do that? I want to look back at the teen center with regards to what they're providing at $96,000. I want to look at domestic violence programs at, you know, 30 people at $24,000. All of these are questions that I have. But I do know that there's other entities. I know there's a foster service provider that provides fostering, especially for youth that are being termed out and are now looking, need housing. We had today a presentation with regards to single fathers that need housing. Mental health services, and then again, we talk about those that are in the community homeless, mental health challenges. You know, what do we do to address those, right? So there's just a couple of things that I want to maybe change up. And I know a lot of these folks get comfortable and they expect it. However, I think we need to do some changes. And so, I'm going to be challenged, challenging some staff to find other ways to reach out into the community and find other organizations, groups, nonprofits, churches, and those alike to apply. And more importantly, provide presentations to the council on the services that they're going to be providing should they receive CDBG funding. So that's something there. With regards to capital improvements, I don't know how many alleys we have in the city. However, this in particular, I'd like to see like, which alleys are those? In other words, I didn't see, I don't have any, like, say, for instance, addresses, locations, et cetera. But what other services can we provide besides alley? I know we just had a horrible rainy season, and there's some streets that I know that are always flooded. And I know that they have a lot of potholes. And we're getting those as much as we can. But I want to just basically see how much we could broaden that 12,385 people that we're reaching further. So that's my hope. And with regards to administrative costs, again, I would be more supportive of seeing consultants go away and have internal operations manage some of that. I know oftentimes in the years that I've been here in Meritu, there's a lot of cost with regards to consultants. We know the importance of consultants to provide us the presentations that you just did here this evening. But in the years that the city has been managing the CDBG, I'd like to see ultimately, if you could round that up for me, Vaughn, cost that we've had to pay out for consulting services. But this is just a start. Thank you.
Any further comments?
To the chair. I definitely concur with Merit Pro Temp in terms of the amount of folks for public services. I'm aware of a lot of organizations within the city, and so I like to see that that list broadened as well. And just like she said, those people have been getting the funding for a while. And it'd be nice to see other people get that funding, and they need it. And like she said, because of the pandemic, we've been shut down. So a lot of organizations are suffering, and they definitely could use that help. And in particular, I would love to see more mental health facilities on that list as well. And then, in terms of the capital improvement, I'm wondering if we could use some of those funds to go towards our facility for urgent care, if that's possible, for the capital improvement. And that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? To the chair.
I'm sorry, just had one last thing. Thank you. Can you, Vaughn, or whomever, provide us later, who are we repaying the $369,004 or $2? And I know you're saying...
It was a loan issued by HUD, so a lot of that gets paid back to Carnegie Mellon Bank.
Okay. So we could find out like what loan that was, right?
Yes.
Yes. If you could provide that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Munoz, for your presentation. So just to clarify, so the public would know that there was a request for proposal, right, that was sent out back in December to all nonprofit, because I, you know, I did receive the emails. So, and that those were the folks who reply to the proposals. And then you guys went through the proposals, right? So right on the proposal, they describe all the services they're going to provide, correct? And I understand that because, you know, I used to be part of the public service in the past. And sometimes, believe it or not, some of the nonprofit does not want to apply is because of the paperwork. Because it takes, when you got, say, $30,000 or $24,000, then you have tons of paperwork that you have to submit every quarter to get a portion of the payment. So you don't get it like one lump sum. You have to get quarterly report, and then they give you $10,000. So that is why a lot of nonprofit have not applied for the public service. In the end, we need to keep in mind that the HUD specifically said only 15% of the total money we receive goes to the public service, to the nonprofit to give service. So, and then also, when you look at the list, it's specifically guided towards the objectives and the goal of the HUD. Because, believe me, HUD is a pain in the neck. So that's what a lot of people don't understand the dynamic of it. So, yeah, the only thing that I would like to see more clarity is about that improvement project, how that money's going to be spent and where. So we want to see that. I understand that any of our colleagues wants to see those proposals. They are available. Because, you know, one time I received about 15 different proposals to read to make sure that everything was correct. So that is where I want to make sure that we on the same pace. And then the other thing about consultants, because in the past, we used to have a CDBG coordinator, but then we no longer have that position. So that is why we've been using consultant to do this type of report. Because like I said, it is a lot of work. It's not just those public service, but it's the entire report, you know, it's about 500 pages that you need to submit to the HUD. And if you screw up, the HUD will hold the funding. So that's why I say it has to be done right. So I appreciate all the effort. Thank you.
To the chair. The thing I just thought about, one of the things that I often see is a lot of nonprofit organizations don't necessarily understand how to fill out the paperwork. So is there a possibility you could use the administrative funds to like give training to those nonprofit organizations on how to fill out the paperwork appropriately? Because that could also be a deterrent, them not really understanding how to fill the paperwork out. So if maybe you can use the administrative funds to teach the nonprofits who are interested in learning how to fill out the paperwork properly.
Yes, and at least since we've been providing services to the city of Hawthorne since 2020, on an annual basis, we host a subrecipient workshop. So any agency that is awarded funds in June prior to their contract beginning July 1st, let them know, hey, here's the requirements. We provide them with tools that they can use, that they would then submit to make sure that they understand why we need all of those pieces of documents to tell the story to HUD of how we complied with those various requirements.
So, how are you doing that outreach? Because you said you only receive eight applications.
That is correct.
And so, what did you do to reach out to the nonprofits? Because eight seems a very low for all of the organizations, nonprofits that we have in the city.
Yeah, so we started the notice with a publication in the newspaper. We emailed all of the subrecipients or nonprofit agencies that are in the city's stakeholder consultation list. And then, if there were any agencies that we had already been working with, we obviously also included them in that correspondence. There have been agencies that have submitted applications in the past that may have even received funds in the past that chose to no longer continue with the program due to the administrative burden to document compliance with the national objective or, in essence, confirming that the individuals served were actually low and moderate income, which is oftentimes more difficult to do for a nonprofit, because now they're having to collect, you know, pay stubs for three months to verify, hey, what's your annual income? Are you at or below 80% of AMI? What's your household size? So that exchange for a nonprofit adds a layer of work that may not be there when they have certain other sources of funds available that may not be as restrictive. Obviously, our role is to assist your partners, because ultimately, that is what they are in succeeding. And so that is part of what the subrecipient workshop is for. The quarterly reports, even though it seems like it's reporting, it's also an opportunity for us to provide that technical assistance and that support so that if we see something wrong in quarter one or, you know, let's say they had a goal of assisting 100 individuals, and then after two quarters, they've only assisted 25, but spent 50% of their award. It's like, okay, if you've spent 50%, but only assisted 25% of your goal, how are we going to make this work? And so a lot of that, the administrative budget, is intended for that technical assistance and ongoing collaboration.
So what was your tracking system? How many people did you send it out to? And then what's the tracking system to know that they actually receive the email requesting them to participate in the program?
Look at the email correspondence, but we can certainly get those details for you.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm wondering, like, sometimes you have the checkoff where, you know, if you've read the, or received it. So I'm just wondering, because it just seems that we should have more than eight. And so, yeah, that would be good to know how many people you actually sent and how many people actually responded. Thank you so much for your presentation.
To the chair. The other thing that also discouraged a lot of nonprofit not to apply is the fact that that money that you receive have to go direct service. You cannot do no administrative costs. So that is a burden to the nonprofit, because if they have to administer that program, and then they have to do more work, and they not be rewarded, because that money had to go direct to service. So they don't have like, like the city has 20% administrative costs. You cannot apply for no administrative costs under that money that you receive. So that is why a lot of the nonprofit have not done that. And it's like myself too. I never applied, you know, since maybe 10 years because it was a lot of work, and it was a lot of, you know, staff work that was not compensated, because all the money had to go straight to direct service.
All right, guys, let's start finishing it up. Last comment.
Just one last comment. Mr. Munoz, in the past, with CDBG technical assistance, they've used the council chambers for those applicants to come, have a seat and have a presentation on technical assistance, their questions and whatnot. It was easy for having it here, because we have the screens and people can, you know, put up the applications. They have questions, how do you fill this out? Or, you know, what's, would you be open to doing something like that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. And you've had these solicitations for applications before, and it's been a broad expense. But I do understand that it'd be good to just take a look to see what your mechanism was this time. Okay? Thank you. Next, we have second, the second general matters item. We will have a presentation by Mr. William Kelly on 2023 Economic Development Strategy Plan adoption. Madam Clerk, can you read it into the record?
Item 10, 2023 Economic Development Strategy Plan Adoption. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council adopt 2023 Economic Development Strategy Plan.
Okay. Well, so we're going to go back and accept the previous presentation from Mr. Munoz. Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney, we're going to vote on accepting the presentation that we got from Mr. Munoz, okay?
That's fine.
Okay. A second. I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Sir, go ahead.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to actually explain some of our economic development, our findings. If you recall, June 22nd of last year, that we had a DOT exercise, SWOT exercise, that Mr. William Kelly assisted us with, with his DOT exercise and the SWOT exercise. And the ad hoc, that includes Councilmember Patterson, Councilmember Montero, myself, and Greg McLean. We have come up with goals that we would like to share with the council for adoption. And with that, I'd like to turn over the presentation to interim planning director Greg McLean and Mr. William Kelly. Thank you.
Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. As city manager indicated, this is the creation of a new ED strategy for the city. As you're aware, most California cities are suffering revenue for a number of reasons. As you're aware, most California cities are suffering revenue for a number of reasons, COVID, pension taxes, things like that. The council really has two choices, to either increase revenue or cut services. But this plan is in an effort to show you how to increase revenue. So the plan has three specific goals. Identify major goals. Two, outline specific objectives to achieve the goals. Then establish the metrics to make sure the goals are achieved. As the council recall, I interviewed each one of you. I interviewed all the city executives to get input on that. That was developed, and then we had a community meeting soliciting citizens' participation in their establishment of the goals and objectives. The council then came back, as you recall, in a study session. We just got red stickers to identify what you thought the priorities were for the city. That was then turned over to the city staff and myself to create an implementation plan to ensure that we cover the bases from your priorities and to establish, as outlined, a matrix system to ensure that these goals are achieved by who, what, when, and how much. At this point, Mr. McLean will give you an overview of the implementation plan.
Thank you.
I don't know where he is. Greg is on his.
I have one. The words are too small to.
At this point, council, I think in the handouts you received in your staff package, there is an implementation document there that has its two pages of the matrix referred to as implementation plan.
So the implementation plan appears on pages ten and eleven of the packet. It's a matrix or grid. And I'm going to go, I'm going to go over that briefly. First of all, I'm going to talk about goals. We've taken the information that we received from all the different sources, including the city council DOT exercise, and we came up with five goals that the city should be pursuing. Number one is create an economic development plan for the city. And I'll come back to the details of the objectives later. Let's do the goals now. Goal number two is develop revenue generating programs and adjust fees. Goal number three, improve development processing and customer service operations. Number four, update zoning code for the twenty-first century. Even though it's number four, that one actually got the most dots. And number five, develop a strategy for major developments. So going back to goal number one, we've identified nine objectives that we would like to pursue to implement this goal. Number one is to make economic development part of every city decision. This is something that we have already been working on. As a matter of fact, even before this plan can be adopted, this is ninety percent accomplished already. But this is an ongoing project and we will not ever reach a hundred percent for that reason. Objective number one point two, hire a marketing and social media professional to create marketing materials to promote the positive stories about the city and to control negative information. This is a hundred percent accomplished. The city manager has hired someone to do that for us. Number one point three, yeah, that's I said, it's going to be very difficult for anybody to read because it's very small, so sorry about that. One point three, develop a business support and development collaborative that interfaces directly with existing small and large businesses. This is an idea that came from the city council, and this has already been implemented through the Business Connect project. One point four, develop plan to attend annual ICSC and other local economic development events to seek opportunities to capitalize on area attractions, infrastructure, and city assets. This is twenty-five percent accomplished. We have HDL that does a lot of our tax-related work and other economic development services. We'll be representing the city at the next ICSC. Number one point five, develop a branding program for the city. This will create a recognizable and relevant brand that the city can use, partly to project a new image. This is twenty-five percent accomplished. We have selected a marketing and branding specialist. We should be getting some ideas from them rather soon. That will be presented later. One point six, create a training program that integrates economic development and customer service, emphasizing that all the city employees are economic development practitioners. This is basically, this is sort of a paradigm change for the city. And we want to incorporate this training at the very beginning when an employee is hired to have a part of the orientation that all the employees go through, include an understanding that they will be a part of our economic development team. But it goes further than that. And we've had customer service training last year. That was a part of this effort. So we say this one's twenty-five percent accomplished and it will be ongoing. One point seven, select a specialist to aggressively pursue grants. As much as we love to go get the grants, it takes a lot of, a lot of man hours to go get grants. And one of the things that we would like to look at is hiring a specialist to do this for us because they do it for many cities and they're very successful. And we honestly just don't have the manpower to do it as often as we'd like. Number one point eight, explore and evaluate the creation of an enhanced infrastructure financing district. This is, this is a replacement for redevelopment to some extent. It doesn't have the housing component, but it functions very much the same way. And once you establish a district, you can collect a portion of the property tax that is paid in that district to finance infrastructure projects within that district that will then improve the property values. And then you'll get that chunk of the, of the property tax going forward. And then it's a cycle that keeps repeating itself. There are pluses and minuses to this, so we are just proposing that we explore it and report back to the city council by June of next year. And the last one in this category is develop a strategy to successfully obtain recognition as a business-friendly city. This doesn't have any direct economic benefits, but it has a tremendous psychological benefit to the city. Getting awarded the title of most business-friendly city by the Los Angeles Economic Development Commission or committee is a very prestigious thing that, and I know some, I know of at least one city that's already won it at least twice, I think three times. So we think that it would be, it would be a marketing tool that we can use to, in our economic development efforts, to be able to say that we've been recognized by the county's Economic Development Commission as a most business-friendly city. So that's one of our goals. Before I move on, those are the, those are the objectives to achieve goal number one, which is create an economic development plan for the city. Does anyone have any questions about this? Then I'll move on. The rest of them are a little bit shorter, so it'll be faster. Goal two, develop revenue generating program and adjust fees. So two point one is complete the 2020 fee study review and adopt new master fee resolution for all the city fees. This is a study that was conducted, I think, in 2020. It was more or less finished, but was not adopted due to personnel changes and so forth. And then when I came on board, I noticed that I, that I thought that the numbers were a little off for planning. So we'll be working with a consultant to update those numbers so that we're collecting the appropriate fees for the services that we provide. And two point two, this one is develop cannabis business auditing procedures. This is, once our cannabis businesses are up and running, probably several months from now, we want to make sure that we're getting the correct taxes from them. So we want to have a procedure in place by then to audit their books and make sure that, you know, we're getting what we are owed. So does anyone have any questions on this section?
To the chair. Thank you, Greg, for the presentation.
Oh, I'm not done. This is just through goal two.
Well, I'm referencing just what you mentioned earlier, you know, regarding the most friendliest city in the South Bay. That's a regular. I pause because it's, I don't have anything good to say about that. That's a regular thing that the mayor, myself, the city council receives with regards to emails, calls, even the film industry, other organizations, groups that want to, you know, frequent our city and use, you know, services here, whether it's the memorial center, whether it's, you know, planning issues, permitting issues, licensing issues. It's just, it's just a lot. It's a lot. And I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but this is a very redundant, very redundant discussion that we have up here. And I have yet to hear that it's been resolved. We started with customer service, which has never been done before, ever, in the history of Hawthorne. We had participants, high in numbers participate. And we've gotten feedback on how that went. And we've had recently workshops done by the city manager, again in history, something that's never been done. It's my hope that there is a, a sheet of sorts of what's the protocol? What's the protocol to address the complaint? That's, that's the most, the most important thing, I think, first. You know, what's first? Who do you call to resolve a complaint? And then, you know, what was done with that and how we, how we managed that, right? But it comes from department heads because ultimately, you're either hearing from one of us up here or the city manager, depending on what the issue was. And we just really, really need to just nail this down once and for all. Because all we're doing is just hearing the same thing. We could have another discussion in the community tomorrow and it's going to be the same thing. So I really want to see how we could be business-friendly, how we could be partners with potential interests that want to come to Hawthorne, how we need to, you know, stroke those that we've hurt, in a sense, and bring them back, and how we could assure them that we could do better. So these are just some of the things that I really want to prioritize. I know there's this economic, you know, things that we could do, but we really need to solve that issue first, which is the customer service and the friendly city that we are, before those that are interested in developing here come because a lot of those interests have left because of the delays that we've had to their, to their projects.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. I will point out, though, that customer service and the business-friendly recognition do come under the first goal, and they are very important, and we recognize that. And a lot of the success that we're going to have with the rest of this program hinges on succeeding in those areas. But it works the other way, too. The success we're going to have with customer service and recognition hinges on performance in these other areas that I'm going to go over in a little bit. So it all fits together as a package. It's, it's not like we are going to have to take these things sequentially. We can do many things at once. We have lots of good, good brains working on this. And we have a very good team now to implement these things. And once they're implemented, we want them to become routine. So customer service is definitely, definitely a very high priority for this program. And I think that's been demonstrated through the actions of a city manager. Okay, so goal number three, unless anyone has another question? I'll move on. Okay. Goal three, improve development processing and customer service operations. So this has an entire goal for itself, which I think is indicative of how important we think this is. So first, we have develop a great customer service recognition and incentive program. Well, we've seen, we've seen that already in its infancy through the employee of the month thing because a big part of winning that recognition is being acknowledged as a good provider of customer service. So we'll continue to work with the HR director on that to make that program function is an even more important part of the customer service mentality of the city. Number three, hire, this one is a lower priority of these, but hire an impartial consultant to review development processes and recommend best practices. The reason I say this one's a lower priority right now is because I think we need to get our processes and our practices into, into working order before we do this. And with the turnover we've had in building and planning and public works and some other departments, it's probably better that we, we come together as a team first and get our stuff together before we have somebody come and evaluate us on that. But three point three is initiate collection and reporting of key performance indicators, otherwise known as KPIs, to be used for training, reporting, forecasting, employee evaluations, and improved processes. So basically, what we're proposing here is that all of us department heads need to be collecting data on our performance. It's not just on our staff, because that's certainly important, but on our department's performance. Because if we're, if we're intending to improve, we need to know where we're not meeting expectations, okay? And the good thing is this data can be used for all of those purposes that I've just outlined, but also reporting is a big part of it. We will be making this information available at city council meetings, and it will be therefore public knowledge, which I think is a very important way of keeping us focused on what's important here.
Greg?
Yes.
So you just, you finished three point three, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I guess this one kind of just piggybacks on what Mayor Proten says. Hire the impartial consultant to review the development process and recommend best practices to improve throughput. So one of the things that we as elected officials have received has been calls from developers, not necessarily developers. It's just the people that are just kind of refurbishing a small locale, trying to get things going. Those are the ones that really complain, okay? That, I mean, and we have to acknowledge that, and we have to admit that on council, people who have been here, my council colleagues that have been here for a while. If the big players, they know how it works. They know how long things take. They know what the requirements are. They're not messing around, okay? They know what it takes. There's no need for them to complain. We're just like any other city. And we're just like any other city to those small businesses that are trying to get their, refurbish their buildings and bring things up to code. The reason I mention it is because, don't be afraid, council, city council colleagues, when you get those calls, there's always two sides to the story. And most of those times, these people want to cut corners. They hired the wrong architect. They didn't hire an architect. They're just depending on the construction guy that they got from wherever, not even licensed, et cetera, doesn't know what they're doing. So many times, the complaints that we get to code enforcement, or when building inspection, right, is that your guy's making me do this and he's come here two or three times. Well, they're not doing what the guy's laying out, or gal, whoever the building inspector's doing. So I think we just need to be careful that in this whole thing about being customer, business-friendly, sometimes it's, it's, the complaints are not warranted. There, you know, we shouldn't be swayed by that and think that there's an issue. And sometimes even when, and going back to the collection of the business taxes, we had this MAS, or what was the name of the group? MAS or something, right? MAS. MAS. They did their job and they did it well, to the point that people would complain to us, but they complained to us, but they still had to owe all that money. Maybe their approach, whatever. Is there a nicer way of saying, hey, oh, hey, by the way, you know, you know, they were a little bit more aggressive about it? We still need to, so sure that we can have some more finesse when it comes to dealing with people we're collecting business tax with, developers or the small people who are businesses that are trying to get their projects through, maybe a little bit more finesse. But I think on the, for the most part, we're just like any other city. And when, I don't, we should not be forced to believe that. Torrance is better for this, Tor, you know, Gardine, you know, it's like.
May I address that?
Yeah. I mean.
No, I, I think that you've brought up some very valid points and they're very important. But I would say that half of the, the customer service is actually dealing with the customers, especially the ones that are already upset. And the other half is preparing our processes and our instructions and so forth in a way that they, that they know what's expected and they know what's coming. And it's about being, getting our information, why are we doing this? And how are we going to do it out there before they create expectations that are not realistic? So yeah, I, I think your points are very well taken. And it's all part of the big customer service question, which is a very, very large issue. I mean, there's not one simple way to deal with customer service. There's a hundred ways that have to be addressed.
And then I think that we should give a fair opportunity for all the employees here to go through this customer service training, which I think believe they always have, they already have.
I have.
But I don't think that we should be afraid of moving people around that are either, if they're upfront, dealing with people and there's an issue there, I don't think that we should be afraid of giving them another responsibility and placing people who are more adept to social interactions, all within whatever the appropriate human resources guided process would be, right? And be fair about it and just be as, you know, conscious about what we're doing.
Yeah, we, we, we agree with you to a extent. It's important that the people that represent us to the public are representing us in the way that we want to be represented. Anyone that's not should either be reassigned or trained. And training should be the first option, I think. Because we want to give everybody a chance. But part of that is understanding their role as an economic development practitioner for the city. And people that don't understand that will have a tendency to not provide the best service.
And I believe we're headed towards that direction because I have not received any calls about anything recently. So that's a good thing.
I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead and finish.
I was gonna say, I think it is working too, because in just the last month, I've received no, I actually haven't received a complaint, except for about specific issues with landlords, not about the city. Almost since I started, but in the last month, I've received two compliments about our service, which is new for me. I'm very grateful. Express that to the people who give that information to me.
Also, woman?
So in regards to improving development processing, I always think that we can improve. Yeah, we may have a good month, or you may not have received any phone calls. But I think you can always do better. And I also believe that, well, I'll say, when I am out in the community, I do get people that complain to me. And you may not get that complaint, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. And so to say that we don't need to improve is like saying that we're perfect, and we're not. And we have, we, we are different from other cities. And so our process that needs to be improved and developed, I think is really important. Because once we do that, we understand the customers, our, our revenue will increase because then we'll have the reputation that's been branded, you know, bring more people to our city because they will hear from another vendor that we have great customer service. And I can't tell you how much and how important it is to have great customer service. Because if you look at the Fortune 500 companies that have survived, that are doing well, it's because customer service is their number one priority. So for me, it's really important that we improve because we are not perfect. And you have some good days and you have some bad days. And you will have those people that will complain because they didn't do what they were supposed to. But at the same time, it doesn't mean that everybody else has to suffer because those particular people are not doing what they want to do. I mean, they're not doing what they are supposed to do, right? So I think, again, from me, we do need to improve. And, you know, we also need to have work sessions to determine what worked well, what didn't work well, right? We need to have our own internal survey so that we are doing those practices that are good practices. And we know that we need to keep going in that direction so that we can improve our revenue because of reputation. Word of mouth and branding is so important, and that's what we need. And also, when you say it, we want to be labeled the type of city that's, that gets our honor saying the, the best city or friendly business. We want that because people do pay attention to that when they're choosing to house their business. So I want us to get that award time after time after time because we have an incredible staff and we're providing great customer service.
Mayor and council, if I could add some context to this, we do a lot of organizational audits in a lot of cities. And there's two kinds of staff we run into. There's the staff that says you can't do it that way. There's the staff that says, let me help you figure out how to do it. Problem solver, problem identifier. The other issue is customer service training empowers the staff to be part of solutions. We go in and ask questions, why do you do things this way? What's the standard answer we get, do you think? We've always done it this way. When you empower them to think through the processes, they may have ideas that they haven't done before, change the processes. So you really have two things here, customer service, staff development and training. And that becomes a reputation for the city. You're a can-do city, not a can't-do city.
And if you keep doing things the same way, you don't get improvement. If it doesn't work, you change it until you find that it works.
Thank you for that. I, I would like to reemphasize the KPIs, the key performance indicators. Because if we're going to evaluate how we can improve, one way is to know where we stand and where we're falling short and where we're excelling so we can build on those. So that's very much in the spirit of what you were saying. And then it's not implicit in this program, but this is a, this is not a forever program. This is to be reevaluated on a yearly basis. So this is sort of like the after-action report that you're sort of implying that we should be doing? Absolutely. At the end of the year, we'll be coming back to the council and saying, this is how we have done, and probably even more frequently than that, so how, what kind of progress we're making. And if there's any areas that are lagging, then we know we need to start addressing that. And likewise, if there's any areas that we complete, we can check it off and add another. We try to keep it to five goals because that's manageable. So if it's okay, I'll move on to number four. Okay, update the zoning code for the 21st century. I probably don't need to tell you, but our zoning code, which was developed for the 19th century, I think, is holding us back, okay? It is one of the saddest things that I have to turn away businesses on a regular basis because they can't meet parking requirements that were established way back when. And they have no need for parking because they're just like a virtual business or something, you know? It happens all the time. We need to address the zoning code. And I appreciate that all, that this one got the highest votes because I think everybody up here recognizes this is the case. So basically, I intend to develop an RFP to find a qualified consulting team, because this is a huge project. This is not the kind of thing that I can do even. And I, I can do a lot, but I can't do this. To go in first and find the low-hanging fruit in the zoning code and get us some quick fixes there, and then go into the general plan and open it up, do all the public meetings that are necessary, because there's a lot required, and figure out what the plan for the city is going to be for the next 20 years. And then based on that, come back and do a complete overhaul of the zoning code. So we'll do the quick fixes first, we'll just try to get things stimulated, but we need to rewrite it. We need to be thinking of our zoning in terms of outcomes, not just to solve the problem of the day, okay? Which is how our zoning code became the monster that it is. It was just somebody had an issue, so they told us, wrote a, write an amendment, and we did. And then, you know, it's not an issue anymore. Like, I'll give you one example. A lot of cities were very concerned about internet arcades. We spent a lot of hours writing about internet arcades, and what did that do for anyone? And it's not just this city, it's every city, right? If we had a different approach that was looking at performance of these businesses rather than the specific businesses, we would be a lot more flexible, and we would still have the necessary controls to make sure that we got good quality developments and good quality businesses in. So that's the goal, okay? Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, the second part of that is the public outreach. It's required, very extensive public outreach to do a general plan amendment. We intend to take it further. Because we actually do listen to the public and get good ideas from them. We're not always able to implement everything, but we at least get an idea of where, you know, what we should be looking at. And we intend to continue to do that. So the general plan is a community-wide, city-wide project that everybody should be involved in. And so anybody that wants to be will be. So that gets its own objective for that reason.
To the chair, I have a question. Because it's on my mind right now, Greg, before I forget. Do you know if any of our CDBG monies can be used for, say, for instance, securing funding to do your RFP? Or say, for instance, doing an outreach component to residents? Do you know if any of that, you could bring that question back later, but if that's what it is, community development block grant monies, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we could, we, maybe we could do some switches to help in these efforts. Because if you're waiting for securing funding to do an, an RFP for consultant, I think, I don't think we're gonna, you know, move, move any faster.
Well, that's also part of the reason why we're looking for a grant, you know, consultant to get that money for us. I am not 100% sure, because it's been a long time since I've had to work with CDBG at home. I know home funds are not eligible for that. And I think that looking at the breakup of the CDBG into public services, capital projects and administration, I don't see how it fits into any of those, but it's something we'll look at and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay. Number five, last goal, develop a strategy for major developments. I'm not going to go through these, I'm just going to say that we have been working on a strategy to get the mall moving. And we've been working with the owner of the RFK hospital site, and we're, we're actually making progress. It's not visible yet, but we are making progress there. We are also trying our best to help with key sectors, that would be hotels mainly, restaurants. And I'd like to add R and D and other kinds of light industrial that can really help to build the, the knowledge base of our employment here. So we're working very hard to do these things. This, this plan is part of that. The zone code changes that I'm contemplating will work toward that goal. So that's all part of develop a strategy for the major developments. Because if we don't see progress on these major sites, then we're going to be working against the tide, right? And then the 5.1 was, was more back to the public outreach. We want to create various and numerous mechanisms for getting the word out. We know that we, we use cable, we use Facebook, we use all kinds of social media and everything. But each of these only targets certain aspects of the population, and we have to continue to keep ahead of this. So if we want to get our message out to the right people, we have to be strategic in how we do this. And part of that is also that the messages that we're sending should be relevant and informative and also congratulatory. So when we do something good in the city, we should be putting that out there. So again, we're just putting another emphasis on, on community outreach, okay? This is a more generic form than what I was talking about for the general plan. But I just wanted to point that, point out that this is also a key part of our strategy, is to make everybody start to rethink how they look at the city.
And I think the council and all of us have social media that we could maybe take on some of that, too. With regards to, you know, positive postings on what, you know, what, what accomplishments the city's done or what, what events we have coming up, or, you know, just in general, right?
Also, also to the chair, I also think that it would be great, I saw a video where all of the council people had a part in the video, I think it was Carson, the city of Carson, where everybody from the city went and did an infomercial or a commercial talking about positive things for our city. So like, we were talking about recruitment. And we say, come and work for the city of Hawthorne. And then each person would say why they should come and work for the city of Hawthorne. So whatever project that we're working on, we all collectively have a spot in the video and talk about what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And it just, when I saw the video, it was amazing. And I thought, here you have staff and council at part of the video and telling you why coming to the city of Hawthorne, whether it be working for our police department, working for our city, or just coming to bring your business. Each person having a part in telling that, and then using that video, posting that video on, on channel 22, on our social media, and then giving it to branding to also promote it as well. I think that would have a huge impact on changing our reputation as well as increasing eyes on our city and what we're offering.
Very good suggestions. And I would even go further and say we should take that video to the ICSC so that it can be playing for, you know, the big corporations out there everywhere. That illustrates how integrated this plan is. Every part supports the other parts, right? And so in conclusion, I just want to say that, you know, this is a manageable, doable plan. It won't be easy, but we've got the, the spirit and the willpower to do it now. And with the council's blessing, we would love to ask you to approve this plan so that we can start working on it for the next, for the next five years. And we'll come back every year and see if it needs to be adjusted.
All right.
Mayor and council, I have one, one final comment.
Good.
You have a huge opportunity with SOFI being right next door. How do you capture all that through traffic? That's a challenge, because that could be a significant revenue stream in the future by capturing those people going to all those sports arenas there. Because right now, Ingo is getting all of it, and the cities around you are getting it. Now you want part of that. Thank you.
To the chair, if I can add one additional item.
So where we at? Final comments?
Yeah, final comments. As we move forward with our staff reports, we will place indicators at the bottom addressing each goal that's here. So moving forward, if this item is adopted, we will address the goal that we're addressing in all staff reports to have measurable and trackable items.
To the chair, real quick.
Yep.
In accepting the suggestions here, I could suggest that you please change my name to my correct spelling. It's Reyes, not Rivas. And council member Alex Montero is also spelled incorrectly, that's a T. So before, yeah, just make those amendments for me, please. Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the presentation.
Second.
Please vote. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilmember Montero, are you, are you casting a vote?
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
So just in the future, when we, when we cast this, we just erase everything and just cast another one from scratch?
Want to do it again?
No, it, I think, are we okay on this one?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. There's going to be items 11 through 25. Madam clerk, can you please proceed by introducing each item?
Item 11, amendment to the current agreement contract Hawthorne Municipal Employee Association. Item 12, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Police Officers Association. Item 13, Betty Ainsworth Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project, project number 23-03, out to bid. Item 14, City of Hawthorne Own Building Roof Rehabilitation Project, project 23-06, out to bid. Item 15, receive and file the single auto report for 2021, 2022. Item 16, approval of purchase order of, to South Bay Ford in the amount of $340,000 for the purchase of five replacement police patrol vehicles. Item 17, progress payment number four in the amount of $682,094.25 due to Martinez Landscape Company Incorporated of Solmar, California for general maintenance. That's project number 22-05. Item 18, application approval and agreement of hazard mitigation grant program DR-4569-021-025R between the City of Hawthorne and the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services and the Federal Management Agency for the City of Hawthorne Seismic retrofit project phase one. Item 19, appropriation of $150,000 in funds to nonprofits in the City of Hawthorne. Item 20, annual comprehensive financial report of the City of Hawthorne for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. Item 21, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Police Management Supervisors Group. Item 22, amendment to the agreement contract Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association. Item 23, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Revenue and Cost Specialists for the calculation and textual support. for the calculation and textual support of a new development impact fee calculation and nexus report. Item 24, the use of proposed military equipment by the Hawthorne Police Department pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Item 25, the appropriation of $64,591.60 to Hawthorne Police Department budget after the award of the State of California Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant for the same amount. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items 11 through 25?
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I'd like to pull item 24 and 25 for discussion, please.
I move on all items except 24 and 25.
Second.
Please vote.
Voting reflects mayor and council members voting, yes.
Discussion on 24.
Thank you. Item number 24, the use of proposed military equipment by the Hawthorne Police Department pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. If I could just make a directive on future, future bills coming from the senate or the state to provide us a copy of, of that so that we could review those bills in correspondence to the items for the agenda. In this case, I'd like to see ultimately an amendment made that would include language that would reference something similar to, would require a state of emergency by the City of Hawthorne, voted by, and with a resolution. And would also, also request an annual report from the police department with regards to any, any, any of those uses and/or just reporting out to the council, if you will, to assure proper city accountability.
Received and noted.
Thank you.
So is that going to be the amendments as, as of now? We're going to incorporate that into this? Does anybody have any comment on that?
I imagine we have to bring that back.
I think we should.
It's similar to item, it's similar to item number five, Resolution 8400, which basically is saying that the City of Hawthorne for financial assistance from the federal emergency management would be, we would have to then, you know, declare an emergency right to receive funding from FEMA. In this case, if we're asking, say, for instance, for use of military equipment for any said purpose, that it be ultimately voted on by city council through a resolution for those uses. And then ultimately, those would be required to come back to the city council and report out should any of that equipment was used, very simple.
I'll support your, your item.
Thank you.
If there's a motion with interdilination?
Through the chair.
Okay, there's still discussion then.
Yeah. Because it's my understanding that this Assembly Bill 481 was created so the police department all, all over California has to every year list all the equipments that they have that is considered so-called type of the, you know, military hardware. Am I correct on that, Captain?
Chief, we'll have chief speak on this item, see if we can get clarity.
This is a mandate that the state set, the police department have to submit a list every year.
Councilmember Montero, that, that is our interpretation of what the legislation's intent was. So that is the purpose for the agenda item on today's council meeting. Is to report what our current inventory of equipment that falls under that defined by AB 481. And to make sure that our elected officials from the city council are aware that we have that in the police department inventory of equipment.
True. And if the amendment, the amendment that I'm making is to add that, should there ever have to be a use?
If there is, if there is a use of it, yes, I, I do believe that we would be able to report back to the council if we do have to resort to utilizing any of that equipment.
Thank you.
Okay, I move. With the, with the interdelineation? Well, I, I, I'm open to, okay, so with the interdeline, interdelineation. Mr. City Attorney, you have that?
Thank you, chief.
Could you restate that?
Just for clarification, basically, the interlineation changes is that you would like more information on the legislative bill which is here, is AB 481. And that it, we include a language that, and the report be submitted to the council when there is any use of, of these military equipment.
Correct.
Okay.
I second that. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Item 25, discussion.
I just want clarification, I understand there was a grant received by our city for $64,591.60 to the Hawthorne Police Department. However, it's being asked to be taken from the general fund, given to the police department, and then the police department, we would then ultimately get the grant, like a reimbursement? Is that right?
Partially correct, ma'am. So the state of California through BSCC, which is one of the law enforcement committees, has issued funding to every law enforcement agency in the state for the purposes of employee and staff wellness. So Hawthorne, the City of Hawthorne has already received a check from the state of California for the $65,000 amount which has been deposited into the general fund. We are simply requesting that the council approve an appropriation of that same amount back to the police department budget so that we can begin to utilize that for the expenditures that they were set forth for.
Okay, so it was already received?
Correct.
It's not a reimbursement, okay, got it. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay.
I make a motion on that.
Okay.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
City, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Can you please read item 26 into the record, madam clerk?
Item 26, settlement of lawsuit, Naleli Hernandez Lupercio versus the City of Hawthorne. Recommended motion, approve the settlement with Nyleli Hernandez Lupercio. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve item 26?
I'll move.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
All right, let's see. Right, we have a discussion item, councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, real quick, I've talked to the city manager, city attorney about the, the ad hoc committee recommendation that we made in previous meeting. It came to my attention that it's going to be a bit cumbersome. And I wanted to make a replacement recommendation to just give the city manager the full authorization to use whatever resources he feels necessary, whether it be staff or consultant or a poll to communicate with the community about the previous charter proposal that was on the previous, the previous ballot. And kind of, you know, get an idea of what the community, how they feel about the concept and, and various potential parts of a future charter. But essentially, just, you know, make it less cumbersome and just give the city manager kind of authority to kind of run with that research.
Good. All right. Next?
So everybody's fine with that?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Do we need a vote, or do we need a?
Can we get a vote, because, only because of clarification, there's, we're not going to move forward with ad hoc charter committee. We're going to either get some kind of survey or some kind of communication through the city manager's authority to get the community's opinion as to the last charter provisions that was, that was rejected by the voters.
Not just that, but also feedback about what the community might want to see in a future charter.
Okay.
Hold on just a moment, we already started moving ahead with the ad hoc committee, that's not cumbersome, we're already in motion. And we already have a structure for it.
I, I think.
And residents and the members of the ad hoc committee have already been mentioned. Why do we want to change this now? This is not cumbersome.
It was, it was councilman David Patterson who the one who brought it up, right? So now he's just.
Now he wants to change it, but we.
Change it, so.
We can't be jumping around on this stuff, you know, whether it's not going to work out or whatever. It's not cumbersome, in my opinion. We've already started moving ahead with it.
I believe that it will accomplish the same thing, right?
Yeah, I think we should just vote.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay. Let's, let's.
Wait.
So the, so the vote is to go ahead and not move with the ad hoc committee and go with, give city managers authorization to, for community feedback as to what kind of charter provisions they would want.
Okay, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
So can we get a vote?
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
The voting reflects council voting, yes, the mayor Vargas voting, no.
All right, thank you, guys. Reports, Miss City Treasurer?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Miss City Clerk?
Hi, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I wanted to let everyone know that note, I have a flyer for notary services just in case, I'm going to leave them outside. But we are open for notary services by appointment only. So we're really looking forward to having people utilize the service. I'm sure that it is an asset for the community, we want it to be an asset for residents here in Hawthorne. I also want to thank the staff here for accepting interns, almost in every department here. People have been utilizing the interns here and it's been a tremendous amount of help. I also want to thank the city manager for all of the work that he does. He does a lot for, you know, uniting everyone and keeping us together, and I want to thank him for that. Also wanted to let you all know that before, my predecessor had a grant for $70,000 for which he bought gift cards from Subway. I have asked the United Way for $100,000. And I've decided that those funds would be used for businesses here in Hawthorne that do not serve alcohol, so restaurants and things like that. I would be purchasing the gift cards from them. I wanted to thank the American Heart Association. They invited me to their annual formal and it was really nice. It was just phenomenal to meet some of the people that I've been zooming with and conferencing with about the food drives. And they're eager, eager to continue that food drive. Also, wanted to let everyone know here that we are ordering sleeves for the tablets so that everyone can have tablets and then have to worry about them being damaged and whatnot. Also wanted to let everyone know that I am in the process of producing some public service announcements about voting to let residents know the importance of voting. And I will definitely be, sort of like the same format that you talked about, would have every person here say something about voting. And then, of course, we would rely on the mayor or, or Mayor Protem or Councilman Montero to do, to conduct that in Spanish. And just for clarification purposes, I'd like to let everyone know that the city clerk is, I am an elected official. And so I do not answer to anyone other than you all. So if you all have any questions or any problems or anything, feel free to come to my office because I'm here most days. Thank you, and that concludes my, my issues, thank you.
Councilmember Manning?
Thank you, mayor. So I just wanted to share with you that May 6 is our Mother's Day brunch. And so, please RSVP as soon as possible because we need to place orders for food. And so if you are planning on coming, going to the phone, uh, computer tonight, and RSVP, we're filling up really fast. And so I, please, take care of that right away. Also, I wanted to say, I really appreciate staff. You guys did an excellent job on the Economic Development Strategy Plan. I'm really excited about all of the things that we have in there. And I can't wait until we start implementation. Also, I wanted to say I had an opportunity to go to the Historical Society Pancake Breakfast. It was fun. And one of our residents, Betty, was there. And she's 99 years old. And I tell you, that lady is sharp as a tack. And so it was great having that conversation. And then just going into the historical library, seeing all of the pictures and stuff. And so it was very educational. I definitely suggest you take a look. Also, for the city manager, I received a call from one of our residents requesting a stop sign at 137th and Jefferson. So if you could please look into that, Mr. Postel.
Could you repeat the address?
Gosh, you know what?
136th and Jefferson?
It's 137th and Jefferson.
Okay, I'm just trying to look it up real quick. Go ahead, sorry.
And so if you can look at that. And then, one last thing, an idea popped into my head. And I was thinking, a lot of the business think about their issues with parking. And so my idea is that if we could create a parking structure that would house all of the customers that come for the businesses. So often when I go to other cities, they have a public parking lot that people come in, you pay a fee. But if we could have a parking, a public parking structure to take care of some of the parking issues on places that's close to Hawthorne Boulevard, if possible. If that's something you could look into. But, yeah. If we could find some money to build a parking structure for our city businesses, thank you. Is that your car? Wow.
He's giving you a sign.
They're trying to break into my car, what's going on?
Thank you, city manager.
No, it's today, this meeting, I don't know. No, that's not the case. Councilmember Patterson, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the community for coming out, as always. Appreciate your involvement, your support and, and your feedback. Always enjoy our community, how, how much our community gets involved in all of our activities and our events. And it's great to see you, as always. Want to thank the staff for your hard work and thank our police department for your commitment as well. Did look at some of those military items that we are registered. And I hope that we don't need to use many of those. I would like to ask the manager to kind of, this is regarding the annexation presentation. If you can maybe check with the county and kind of take their temperature as far as how they feel about that idea. I do want to thank our directly elected city clerk for providing these laptops again. They're, they're so convenient. And definitely champion all cost savings activities that happen in our city. Mr. City Manager, Pastor Jefferson had brought up a request to provide housing for single fathers with children. I'm not sure, you know, how feasible that is, but I do think that's a great cause. So I want to make sure we have some kind of mechanism to support people that follow that, that demographic. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, great meeting. Thank you for the residents for coming and also to view us on YouTube and Channel 22. The first thing I think I want to do is I want to commend our city manager Vaughn and all the head departments because even they went through the process of strategic planning and goal setting. That was something that would have not been done in, in the city for 20 years. So I want to commend him for spitting up all that thing. And then, with the Economic Development Strategy, I want to thank you, Greg, and the, and the consultant, and also for all of us. Because this is going to be a working document, right? Because this is a roadmap to tell us how the city should be moving forward. And I think they did a tremendous job to give us these five goals that is very obtainable. And we just have to make sure that, like he said, economic development and customer service is part of everyday business of all the departments, not just one department. Even city managed department or, or the city council, you know, the way we portray ourselves to the public. So, so that is where, you know, we have to embrace this document and make sure that the.
this document and make sure that they're going to do progress and we're going to redefine or redo something to make sure that this is like, now it's like our Bible, right? We, we, we have a roadmap to do it. So I want to commend all the staff for that because I know it was a, a lot of work and even the public who attend the, the swap. So I want to say thank you to, to some of them. And we see Mr. Rubin over there, Bill and Mohammed and the Haggadis, you know, they were, they were there, the police department, so all there. So thank you for helping us create this document. So this is the, is a great thing. I want also commend the police department, the public works, and I hope we put these things to rest about the, the Truro Avenue, the one-one-nine-six-three Truro. So thank you for this total report. And, and I always thought that, you know, we were doing the right thing. So we cannot just break the law for one citizen. So thank you for this report. Yeah, the, the annexation is kind of interesting, right? Because, because when you talk to some people, some of them will say, yeah, we would love to have Hawthorne so we can have the police department because you, our police department is one of the finest in the nation, right? So they want our service, but some of them then go and vote three-two, three-to-one, not an exit. So it's kind of funny. So the other, the other part that actually, I have a gentleman that I met, he's a lawyer. He moved from Manhattan Beach to Hawthorne and he said he loved Hawthorne. So, so and he say, thank you, thank you for all of us for the service that we've been doing. So we've been doing something right because we got people going to us and say, thank you, the city is good. So I'm happy to be here. That's what he told me. So, talking about happening, so on the last Sunday, the Hawthorne Presidents' Council, you know, we did held the thirty-eighth Annual Volunteer Appreciation Day where myself and Mr. Mohammed Adwadala, now is the treasurer because, you know, Norm Morton passed away, so we need a new treasurer. So, and we actually was a great event. So we had some jazz music, some modors, we got about eighty recipients who received their certificate. And it's a partnership between Hawthorne Presidents' Council and the City of Hawthorne. It's not just Hawthorne Presidents' Council. But thanks God that I had Dr. Mark Carrion from the Hawthorne School District and Mohammed to pass those certificates when I was calling for the names because Dick Yum couldn't be there because his wife is, you know, sick. So, and also Ms. Love always was there with me. So she's gone to, to the heavens and then Norm Morton went to the heavens. So I had to, you know, put everything together. But it was a great day. We honor all these eighty volunteers. I'm hoping next year will be more. And then like Pastor Jefferson say, you know, I stopped by the church and they were honoring him. And the pastor from the, that church in Holly Park, Aperton, yeah, so Aperton. So he was the host, you know. So, and you got people talking about Pastor Jefferson, about what he has done with the fathers, with the, with the homeless kids, you know, the DCFS kids, the foster kids. You got people came from the County Department of Social Service, you know, praising him. So I would love for us maybe to the next meeting to give him a proclamation of his twenty-three years of service. So I want to put on the agenda to give them that because he's been doing a lot of stuff for the community, you know, like he got food pantry every day, he give food away. He does put people into housing, you know, you know, even pay their rent for them not to become homeless. So he's done a tremendous job for the community. So I think he deserves some credit. So I would love to give him a proclamation our next meeting. Just an announcement to remember, on May eighteenth is going to be the Hawthorne Presidents' Council K-9 Community Dinner to raise money for the K-9 Unit for the Police Department. And, you know, I have a big shoes to fit because last year we raised fourteen thousand dollars. So I have to raise another fifteen thousand dollars, right? So anything can help, donation, buy a ticket for dinner, six dollar and three fifty for the kids. So, and it'll be about five o'clock and usually we had about four hundred people there. So I hope to see all of you there. So, and that note, I'll say good night. Thank you, God bless. And this is City of Good Neighbors and we're doing pretty good. So thank you very much.
This Pastor Weaver.
Pastor Weaver, yeah. Pastor Weaver from the, yeah, thank you. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of sentiments, picking back in, picking back off of what was already said here. Great council meeting. Thank you for everyone's participation. Thank you, Chief. We read the reports. We see the hard work everyone's doing. I just want to mention the Mother's Day event. That, that event is just right around the corner, May sixth. We're going to be honoring some women. There's RSVP that you should be emailing your requests to, which is required. And it's for Hawthorne residents. So make sure you're a Hawthorne resident so that you could participate. I also want to make mention that LAX is hiring. I received an email this morning from a good friend, Ms. Watkins. She's the LA airports, LA, excuse me, Los Angeles World Airports. They're hiring for their readiness program, which is a recruiting for apprenticeship programs. It's an eight-week course. It's starting in June. They just finished one, I believe, on April twenty-first. Graduates are introduced to trades in contract, contractors. According to the payroll, graduates are averaging forty-one dollars an hour and the starting pay is typically between eighteen to twenty-six. I'm working with the city manager to ensure that the distribution of the, of the notice is wide here in our community so that those that are looking for jobs here in Hawthorne have an opportunity to participate and enroll in the apprenticeship program. Kudos to Councilmember Montero on the volunteer appreciation. I didn't realize that it's that many years already in history. Great event there and, and everything that you've done in the community with regards to our K-9 Dinner and, and those that we bring out the community to honor. Just so that folks know, we have full-time jobs. There's some of us that have full-time jobs which require us oftentimes to work Saturday and Sunday. And so I work for an elected official. I work for the City of Los Angeles and oftentimes I'm pulled to staff. So I might not be able to make a lot of events, however, where I can, I do, I do try and participate. However, I heard a lot of great things about this past weekend's volunteer recognition. So thank you for that. I want to make sure that we have information with regards to telehealth, that they come back and they put a report out on what it is they're doing. But we also have to understand that they weren't hired initially to do homeless, okay? Homeless outreach. That was not their services. The services that they were provided was to address mental health and to provide referrals and more importantly, get them services connected using their van and their IT systems immediately. So it wasn't until later we asked if they could maybe incorporate that. So we just need to see how that's working and/or not and then see, you know, the great wraparound services that are being already provided through our, our mobile home unit behind the senior center and then our new pallet shelter housing and then moreover, Akata and then telehealth. So there's a lot there. We could always do more. It requires funding and that's always the challenge. Yeah, the CDBG is very important. I think that we continue to just do more to assure that everyone's aware of what's available to them should they want to apply for potential funding. We understand that it's a hard process and those that oftentimes get the same money all the time is because they're aware of the process and they're, they know how to do that. But we want to be able to help those that, that need help so that they could have an opportunity to chance also. So, yeah, I see the, our graffiti removal is, is working hard to address our graffiti, our graffiti in our city. Thank goodness as soon as it goes up, it comes down with regards to just all around services in our city. I keep saying and emphasizing on it time and time again. We're very fortunate to be here in the City of Hawthorne and have our services cleared up pretty quickly from trash to dumping to graffiti to just a number of things. It's my hope that those individuals that are, say for instance, in LA County and the railroad get their services needs met too. Because the county is not the City of Hawthorne. The county has their own areas, as you saw today, that they're responsible for. And so oftentimes we're generous and we'll pick it up, but it's not our responsibility. So, you know, be aware of where you live, where, where you reside and who you need to talk to with regards to getting your services met. And so we're very fortunate here in the City of Hawthorne. And with regards to the railroad, the railroad is responsible for their, their railroad and, and the, and the cleaning and the upkeep, just like Caltrans is responsible for the off-ramps, on-ramps and anything having to do with the freeway infrastructures. So again, city's very generous. We don't have that much staffing. That's a come, it was important today to just approve some of the things that were mentioned with regards to tree trimming and some other things that we need cross-training for and have availability for those to go out and, and provide the services that we ultimately are asking for. So again, good council meeting. Yeah, I don't have committees to, to, to report out on, but I will need Councilmember Montero for SCAG in May. Yeah, the four and five. Because I got the Mother's Day event, I have the Mother's Day event on the sixth, so I'm, I'm really stretched thin, but I'll give you the information. May fourth and fifth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just got one go back. I forgot to mention, April twenty-ninth, we are doing a meet and greet, myself, the chief and our city clerk and our city treasurer for Ramona on April twenty-ninth is Ramona neighbor residence. We're going to each area, each park. And so I just wanted to say to all of the Ramona residents, please meet us in the park, April twenty-ninth at eleven AM. Thank you. No? One PM. I'm sorry. One PM.
That's too early, huh? Nine, right?
Sorry, I apologize. Let me just repeat that. Ramona, one PM, April twenty-ninth. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you guys. I want to thank the chief, Chief Tomatani and, and his, all his crew for going out to the community. They went to North Hawthorne this time. So thank you for looking at those businesses that are along Hawthorne Boulevard and going to all the other events that you support, the different events that you support for my fellow council member colleagues. And when community groups ask you to go out and visit, that's part of our community policing. There's kind of a community outreach, term it, whatever it is, it's connecting with the community and it's paying.
They went to the Islamic Center.
They, you guys went to the Islamic Center too? So you're bridging the gap. I mean, look, we've, we've had a great history with our police department. Our civic pride has been always strong in the city. We've had like ups and downs when it comes to engagement, but we've always had a great group of police officers. And at one point, we even had our own fire department that was doing the same type of outreach. So I think we're going to encourage our LA County Fire Department to start doing the same and that'll be happening soon. So thank you, Chief. Okay? And as a result of that, I think one thing that we want to let the residents know, or at least on my behalf, I'm not speaking for everybody on this specific thing, but maybe you guys believe, is that I understand the concerns because when you have those who are homeless or unhoused, whatever term you're, you're using, and we have our children and P, and our residents being threatened, they're exposing themselves in front of our children because they want to use somebody's hose to, you know, bathe themselves and other threats and et cetera. Our part, on my part, the resident's safety is a first priority, okay? It's, we need to protect you and we will protect you. Everything else comes second. We can deal with all the other issues of supporting them and being able to give the services that we need to be able to rehabilitate. But I just want to let you know that I've tasked the police chief on my behalf to protect you and take that as a first priority. But at the same time, we need to attempt to try to help those who would like to be helped. And a comment was made. I work in a jail, guys. I work in a jail, LA County Jail, where we have a lot of inmates who murder, robbery, other, other charges. And the common theme, I mean, do I have, do I have polling data on this or anything? No. But the common theme is that many people who are out on the streets, unfortunately unhoused, choose to refuse services and there's only so much you can do. So I, I like to pray for them, but I think we should still find the ways in which we can help them as well. But with, and I want you guys to be conscious though that we are, your, your safety is our priority. Everything else comes second in my book, but we do need to try to valid, have the available resources to be able to help. Okay? I just want you guys to think, you know, know that. And now that we have all these resources, we have the house, the, the tiny homes and we have our unhoused homeless task force. And now we have the unhoused to, to work program. We're doing a lot more than other cities are. They're following our lead. So kudos to my fellow council members, staff and the community. So I'd like to ask as a directive, if the chief and our, and our PD could go check, check out the traffic stop near Simran School? We need speed, we need speed hubs. Check out the traffic that's going along there, see what is available and then just see if we, the viability of speed hubs there. Akbar, can you be involved in that, please? All right, thanks. With regards to telehealth, actually it's a good point that my colleague made, Mayor Protem. And I know that it's something that got added on, but it was assumed by them, assumed. And they said that, you know, we can handle that. Yeah, sure. Extend our contract. Okay, we extended our contract, did everything good. And I, I support it. Want to see what, but we also need the data to support continuing having them represent us or offering those services in our city. Okay, we, we need the regular reports from telehealth. We need the regular reports by anybody who were giving money, whether it be, when I'm talking specifically about nonprofits and those service groups that, that we give money to. We need to see the reports to see what, if we're getting banged for our buck on certain things, okay? I mean, the nonprofits that we give certain CDBG money, I mean, we like to see, we like to hear from them, not just, hey, thank you and that's it. Okay, we want to be able to say, hey, you know, what's coming out of this, you know, so we can boast and we could defend the fact that we are giving money and it's working out, right? The annexation issue, definitely we'll have to know what the impetus of this was. It's not coming from the community because we don't have members of Wiseburn Community out here begging to join the city. In fact, we've already had referendums in the past where they've rejected that. Okay, so, and also I kind of doubt that LA County and our supervisor Holly Mitchell would be willing to let that, that large piece of land called Wiseburn go. But I, I respect the request from my council colleagues to have investigated this and see the information for themselves. So if you guys want to continue the conversation, we could do so, but I think we've already had a history saying otherwise. And I think the information that at least I have is showing that it's not going to be something that's really popular, especially if it didn't originate from the community. So, but it's good to look at things once in a while again, right? So I want to let the community know that I'll be going to New York tomorrow to the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, a educational institute on building the infrastructure, economic mobility. There's a lot of jobs out there that are developing the, the Wi-Fi and a lot of the fiber optic networks and we need to get some people to work. And we went, we're going to talk about that and other. And we're going to talk about that and other job opportunities to help get our people, our Hawthorne residents that aren't working to work. And of course, I've already thought it out, and I'm prepared, and I'm going to be able to, what I'm going to do is going to be touting our South Bay WIB's efforts on getting people back to work because they're doing a lot, okay? They're doing a lot. So I already have a couple of pamphlets that I'm going to go back. They didn't ask me to, but I'm ready to have that discussion and use our South Bay WIB as an example of what maybe other people should be doing. So I want to share what our successes have been. So thank you all, our residents, for coming here today. And if there's nothing further from my council colleagues or staff, or I guess the residents already had their opportunity to speak, this meeting is adjourned at nine-ten.